Welcome, everyone, to the Glendale City Council Meeting of October 25, 25th, being called to order at 6:05 PM. Clerk Kabajin, may we please have roll call?
Yes, council members Asatrian.
Here.
Bratman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian.
Here. I'd like to ask everyone to rise and join me in saluting the flag of our nation and remain standing after the flag salute for the invocation. Please your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Let's begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Tangva people. As we gather here today, may we have a good sense of the welfare and true needs of people in our community. May we have a keen thirst for justice. May we have confidence in what is good and fitting, and may we have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. May we have peace in our lives and joy in our work. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the October 25, 2022, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, October 19, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, and just like that, it's November 1, 2022.
Most certainly is. And next week's Housing Authority, we only have the approval of the minutes from our October 18 meeting. The evening will be a heavy meeting, however. We have four consent items. The first would be from Public Works regarding a transit and inner-city rail transit program project contract, followed by a couple of reports from the Police Department. The first would be acceptance and appropriation of DNA capacity enhancement reduction grant. The second will be, again, from the Police Department regarding a request for authorization to accept grant funds in the amount of $16,000 for use on automated license plate reader equipment. The final consent item that night would be from Public Works regarding the adoption of plans and specs for the Pacific Park pool shade structure and splash pad project. We have three ordinances, sorry, two ordinances for adoption next week. The first will be regarding the moratorium on new and conversion of existing drive-through waiting lanes, and the next one will be an ordinance authorizing entry into a statutory development agreement for the Lucia Park project located at 620 North Brandon, 625 North Maryland Avenue. Under action items, we'll have a report from Public Works regarding approval of plans and specifications and advertising for bids on the Arts Ah Avenue Entertainment and Arts District Improvement Project. At AP will be Glendale Water and Power regarding the software and hardware support agreement for electricity supervisory control and data acquisition, also known as a SCADA project. 8C will be Community Development regarding introduction and adoption of 2023 Glendale Building and Safety Code. That'll have a related item next, following that, from Management Services regarding introduction of an ordinance amending the Building and Safety Code by adopting local amendments to the code. And 8E will be the City Attorney's Office regarding a consideration of amendment to term limits for members of boards and commissions, discussion revision to nomination appointment process for boards and commissions, including the Civil Service Commission. We have three hearings that evening as well. The first will be consideration of an ordinance related generally to standards for eligible SB 9 projects, minimum SB 478 floor area ratio standards, and incorporation of state law amendments and minor modifications related to junior accessory dwelling units and accessory dwelling units. The next hearing will be regarding the consideration of Glendale Register nomination and a request for Millsack Historic Property Contract for property located at 849 Cavanaugh Road. And the final one is another consideration of the Glendale Register nomination and request for Millsack Historic Property Contract for 2795 Mira Vista Drive.
All right, thank you. Clerk Kabajin, what is next?
Next are consent items, including minutes, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay. Is there any desire to pull off any items, or have there any, have any cards been submitted?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Council members Asatrian.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Yes. Thank you. Next?
Next are city council and staff comments.
Councilmember Asatrian, you want to speak? Go ahead.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank staff for putting together a wonderful Glendale Tech Week. I had the opportunity to attend some of the events, and both the turnout and the caliber of events, I want to duly note the effort that truly showed that took place. On, or last week, I attended the Glendale Historical Society's Gala at the Stanford House. A lot of my colleagues were here, were there with me. And then last week, Mr. Galanian and I also attended the Northwest Homeowners Association. I was pleasantly surprised to also see our planning director present, along with our city attorney and city manager, who were all available to speak to residents, so I just wanted to thank you for that. One of the issues that actually came up at that homeowners' association is a topic that I've been wanting to bring up for a while now. I was trying to pace myself, not wanting to add items constantly to the staff's plate. But, you know, I live in the northwest neighborhood. There has been a need for a dog park for a long while. I know that for some years now, community members have gathered there with their dogs. You know, recently, that number has grown. I believe that we also have a lot more residents who have dogs. I know that we have Lot 11 and the Palmer Park and some other potential projects in South Glendale, but I don't think that they serve this neighborhood. Councilmember Bratman and I actually visited Brand Park about a week and a half ago. We looked at the southwest corner of the, of the park. I'd like a quick memo and a report to see how we can convert this area into a dog park. I drew a red line as to where I would hope the fencing would be to ensure that we're not bothering the neighbors that are adjacent to the other side of the wall. And then the little circle is where I think that there is a pathway for us to make it ADA compliant, but, you know, I'll leave all of that to staff, but I'll need a second for that.
Yes, I'll second.
That's it for me.
All right. Who'd like to go next?
Mayor, I apologize. May I ask for a clarification? Because as, as you may recall, we have, we are in the process of hiring a consultant to conduct a study of these different sites, the previously council has directed this to do. Is it your intention to include this as part of that study or standalone?
So I think our initial thought on this was to have something fenced off as soon as possible, given that we have complaints coming from dogs that are off-leash in the area. So if, if it's possible for us to do it in, in two phases where we're fencing it off and it's nothing fancy, to create that space, and then if you want to include it in the RFP, I, I would be open to that for the, for the future.
I mean, we had, we had a process that we went through not long ago to identify dog parks. I, I would, you know, I don't want this to leapfrog in front of any process that we have, so if it's included in the process, I think that would probably be the more appropriate way.
So the way I, I kind of envision this is that we already have the space, and we're not looking for it to be designed a certain way, and so just fencing it off is much easier than, you know, building a, designing a dog park. But I'm open to hearing from my colleagues, or maybe providing just a report from staff to come back on this.
Yeah, councilmember, Saki, and member of city council, this, although it seems simple to do, as is the case with almost everything we do, we really need to make sure that we have all our Ts crossed and legally our Is dotted, and that we won't create any liability concerns. So it will take a certain amount of time and effort so that we do it the right way, and we'll, we'll issue a memo with our findings, and then we'll take it from there.
Want to include it in the RFP? If that's going to go out.
Let me find out what the status of that RFP is. It may be as, as timely and as fast we do it part of that RFP.
I think that enough direction or information has been shared. We don't want this to devolve into an actual discussion of dog parks, and if there is, if, if there is something that's coming back to us sooner rather than later, perhaps this can be rolled into that as a consideration. I, I would welcome a discussion on it, but I think it is fair to say that we, we should also not distract staff from some of the other things that are in process. And I do know that there's a number of things out there that are being discussed, including now there's options in South Glendale for an alternate site. So we'll leave it at that. I think that staff can tell us when they're coming back within the coming weekend, we'll, we'll move forward. All right, thank you. Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
And then councilmember Bratman.
Okay, thank you. Sorry if my voice holds up. Again, thanks to our Director of Community Development and Economic Development for a very successful Tech Week. Staff did an amazing job, and as councilmember Asatrian said, it was very successful, and it just keeps growing, and that just is, is proof of the work that goes into it and the value that it projects to the, the, the public. I want to make everyone aware that it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the mayor and I attended a, an award ceremony that Assembly Member Friedman held at Laura's Corset Shop, and that's on-brand, and this is a little shop that's been there for 100 years, 100 years, servicing women, survivors, patients with breast cancer. So if anyone out there, I know I was at the gala, the Historic Society Gala, and there was a woman there that was a breast cancer survivor, and she had no idea that this place existed. And so if there's anyone out there that's looking for help, this is a lovely place where they give you tender, loving care, and, and we'll take care of, take care of you, and as, as a sideline, make sure you get your mammograms, ladies. Finally, I attended the Burbank State of the City Luncheon, and I, I learned about a program that the Police Department has been developing. It is a driver's education program. They have had 350 students go through this program, and I know the mayor and I have been, have talked about collaborating with the school district and maybe getting driver's education back into our, our schools. Well, that seems to be a really high mountain to, to get over, but this seems to be something that would be doable. So I've talked to city manager, and hopefully when our new police chief comes on board, we can get a program started. City manager is going to speak with Burbank Police and their city manager and see how the program works, what the curriculum looks like, and what the possibility is. I know that the superintendent of our schools is Dr. Ekshian, is very excited about this possibility, as well as one of the board members, so I'm hoping that in the near future, we, we can get a report back and, and take a look at a program like this for our, our, our kids. You know, we're always talking about traffic and, and how they, you know, ways they learn how to drive and driver's ed, et cetera, et cetera. This, this might be a great way to get kids educated. So I don't know that I need a second on that. I know you're already, I think you're working on that already, city manager. Yes? Okay.
I, as you mentioned, I support and champion any idea that would help make our younger drivers better and safer drivers, especially since the elimination of driver's education from our curriculum.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bratman.
Yeah, just one thing. I want to renominate my Commissioner Savanna Zadorian to extend her position on the Arts and Culture Commission. I had held off earlier, there were some scheduling things we needed to work out, but I understand that the commission is moving their meeting time in a way that will resolve some issues that were out there, so she will be able to continue, and I'm happy with that. So yes, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Friday, I was a speaker before the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA, panel, actually, on the future of transportation. It was very exciting. I was with one of the principals of BYD, the bus company, that's hopefully going to be giving us a bus to test out for, I don't know how long, but it seems like we've been doing this for years. When I was mayor, we were hoping to get the electric bus in, as well as one of the regional directors of the California High Speed Rail. That was on Friday. And I, I think all of us heard the devastating climate news that came out indicating that 10 year, almost 10 years of efforts to reduce our emissions from automobiles and power plants were wiped out in one summer of fires in California. So between 2003 and 2019, all the savings that we as Californians made through vehicle emissions, through power plant emissions, and other types of emissions were wiped out and then some by the fire wildfires of 2020. So I'd like to know if maybe we need to reassess our sustainability plan and maybe put this to the Sustainability Commission. Perhaps we should be placing more emphasis on wildfire suppression. In the city of Glendale, we've got plenty of, plenty of land that could burn, so it just seems a shame that after all those efforts, transit, you know, we've had the Grayson discussions, we've had the Shoal Biogas discussions, electric vehicles have come online, hybrids, all that work in California wiped out in one year. Not just wiped out, but doubled everything that we had saved. So it's, there's a lot of issues involved, but I think it's something we need to look at, and maybe the Sustainability Commission would be available to give us some thoughts on that. If not, bring it straight to council, but perhaps it's best if we use their expertise in just thinking about this and getting some direction as to what, if anything, we should do as a city.
Okay. Is there a second for that request?
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you very much. Excellent. Anything else? Councilmember Najarian?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. I have a number of things. I'll first start off by going through a few of the events of note that I think our community should know about. These are great things that are happening in our community. We had a Great Harvest Festival for kids at Pacific Park, very well attended by families. Thank you to all the staff that was out there, building goodwill and connections and all of the vendors and games, and just, it was, I think the families were very grateful to have this type of an event after, you know, the few years of COVID isolation and caution to have these kids out there using the rock climbing wall. It was great. Also, I believe councilmember Devine and I were at the One Glendale Flag Football Championship Game. Unfortunately, I had a few events to go to that evening, so I'm not sure who actually won it, but I do know that Jefferson was there. I think Mira was represented. It was great to see the families, the parents come out. You know, there was a time in Glendale when many of our middle schools and elementary schools had formalized athletics programs, and then as goes the way of driver's ed and so many of the other programs, it was cut and never put back, and that's where the city has stepped in to really fill a need in our community. So that was great to attend and see. Had a chance to take a tour of Rock Haven again, this time with Friends of Rock Haven. Joanna Linkhorst did a wonderful job of giving a tour of the facility, and looking forward to when we can get that facility open for more people to tour it and see. Tech Week, of course, another great event that many of my colleagues attended, and I'm grateful that everyone attended at least one of the events and spoke at the events, and it was a great collaborative effort by the council as a whole, by staff, working together and bringing in the companies that are thinking of either locating in Glendale, investing in Glendale, or already in Glendale and growing together under one program for collaboration and exchange of ideas. Gate to Heaven, which is a movie that was made by a filmmaker in Arts Ah about Arts Ah, is being shown at the Glendale AMC Theaters at the Americana. Glendale AMC, or AMC Theaters are the newest tenants of the movie theater facility at the Americana, and they are showing this, six films internationally are only selected for special screenings, and this filmmaker from Arts Ah, Jivan Abadisyan, had his film selected. I had an opportunity to see that film as well and encourage people who are interested in learning more about this part of the world that I think many people outside of the Armenian community may not know about to go see this art house film. Wilson Middle School renamed their gym after former principal, Mr. Richard Lucas, and that was a wonderful event attended by many of our school board members. And lastly, these are the things that I think are, oh, and Dia de los Muertos is coming. So Dia de los Muertos, a festival and event at the library. I had a chance to stop by and help them make some of their paper, tissue paper Mary Golds this last weekend. That's going to be a phenomenal event with music and entertainment, always is great. I highly encourage everyone to attend that in the first weekend in November. I think it's November 5. Okay, so these are my requests. I'm going to try to rattle them off quickly. First of all, the governor assembled has assigned Mayor Antonio, former mayor of Los Angeles, Antonio Vera Gosa, to head up the group of local leaders to find out how we can take advantage of the funds allocated by the federal government for infrastructure programs. I attended a meeting at the behest of Mayor Vera Gosa, along with some local leaders, to talk about what our local needs are, what projects we have. And the one thing that's very clear is that we need to coordinate, and we need to get ahead by submitting our requests right away. So I would like us to have a discussion here on council so we can all be on the same page as to how we want to prioritize our requests, whether it's, you know, today we're going to be, we were going to be considering installation of solar. I understand that's going to be reconsidered, or we're taking that off the agenda, but whether it's installation of solar panels on city facilities, whether it's talking about how to bolster our water infrastructure or make greater use of reclaimed water, whether it's transportation infrastructure and mobility, we need to make our asks now. I think there's going to be a lot of funds to take advantage of. We, if, if there's any opportunities to work with neighboring cities on, on projects of common interest, I think we ought to do that as well. So it was about an hour-long meeting. A lot of people spoke. I spoke about the need that when the state makes certain demands of local agencies, that they also provide us with the resources, like for instance with housing, when they're asking us to build more housing, to also provide us the resources we need to build more parks, to hire more police, to hire more firefighters, to be able to provide the quality of life that our residents have come to expect from our city. So I made that case as well. Someone emailed me, and I email, I know they emailed other council members as well about some street vendors. I know that there's been a lot of street vendors popping up. I'm not entirely against people making an honest living, selling delicious food, but it needs to be done within reason, it needs to be done within certain spaces. I think that one of the issues I have is if a certain space is being used, leaving that space in the condition that it was found, and that means making sure that it's not riddled with trash and with the remnants of a food usage. And also, there is some concern about when or where they operate, and it doesn't impede our brick and mortar restaurants and food providers. So I'd like us to have a discussion about that and find out whether there is anything that we can do to control that. I know the county has passed some, and maybe the state has as well, overriding some of those issues, but we should still be able to impose certain regulations that would allow our streets to, and sidewalks to remain clean, and, and quite honestly, I, I hope we can still enforce the unhindered or right away, public right away. So is there a second for my colleagues?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you.
Did you need a second for the first?
For the discussion to come back? I think that should be, I don't know if, if I do, please let me know, Mr. Garcia or Galanian.
Mr. Mayor, and member of city council, if you would like to agendize this item, then we will, we will need a second.
I would like.
I'll second that as well.
I think we should agendize it as soon as possible. And I apologize, I know that adds more to your plate, but this is one of those things where the return on investment of us agendizing and putting in the staff hours, I think will, will pay dividends.
Just a word of caution, something else we'll have to drop off the list.
Totally fine. We're talking about funds from the federal government to be able to do.
Well, depends what drops off. I mean, I don't have a lot of requests out there, but I don't want any of mine to drop off. Maybe that's a topic for discussion as well. If we're going to reprioritize, let's all do it together rather than.
I would be happy to sacrifice one of my requests for the sake of bringing this item forward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and member of city council, we will have a separate discussion about prioritizing your requests and asks.
Not that my requests are any less important than councilmember Najarian's, but I think that we need to talk, we need to get in front of these federal monies that are going to be distributed, $1.2 trillion, folks, $1.2 trillion, by the way, for anyone wondering what is out there, and believe me, other states, other regions have already lined up with their asks. And then the Housing Element Plan, I know that some folks have seen, read an article about Santa Monica having their Housing Element Plan rejected, a developer sweeping in with plans for, I believe it was somewhere like around 4,000 units, was it 10,000?
It was a lot.
It was a lot of units, high rises. It was a lot of units, high rises, that would go without any type of local checks and balances to be able to be built by right. And that has raised the issue from some in the community as to where our housing element stands. I'd like to ask Mr. Calvert to maybe explain to us where we are with ours, when we can expect something. So because if we, if you don't have a Housing Element Plan, then the state says you don't get to decide what gets built and where.
Excuse me, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Right now, we are currently responding to the comments that we received from HCD. We'll actually be meeting with our consultant team this week to start wrapping that up. We plan on doing another public meeting with the general public in November and then returning to council for adoption of the Housing Element.
So what differentiates us from other agencies that have now made headlines by having the state say you have no ability to determine what gets built in your community anymore?
So there was a deadline in there that some of those cities did not meet. That's largely because they had to rezone. We do not have to rezone as part of ours, our existing zoning. We can, we can meet the arena numbers that were assigned to us, and we didn't have that same deadline to meet.
All right, just wanted to make sure that's out there in the public.
So that's the penalty for not meeting arena numbers, essentially?
It's the penalty for not having a compliant housing element.
And arena?
Correct.
Part of that.
And I think that maybe with the, if my colleague, councilmember Brotman, Chair of our Housing Authority agrees, perhaps this is something we could engendize for a Housing Authority meeting, an afternoon discussion, maybe have a study session to better understand this. It'll allow for us to have a more robust discussion with some question answers. Some of it may be repetition, but I think the public would benefit from it.
Sure.
All right, thank you. And finally, I just, I have received a couple of notes and emails about some issues regarding some developments in the Rancho area, specifically not on our side of the border, but the Pickwick Ice Rink and Bowling Alley and Banquet Facility has a project scheduled for it. I was contacted by folks who are concerned about the future of the Rancho area and the character of this equestrian part of town. And a couple of issues were talked about, including there's, I guess, one house that's going to come before Design Review Board. There's definitely a lot of concerns and consternation, especially some of the topics that have come before us and are before us tonight. I would like us to talk with the members of the community in the Rancho, to talk to them about what can be done to help preserve the aspects of their community that they feel are important to the character. I had asked that when, during my mayorship, we have these community meetings, these councils in your neighborhood like we had before, I would like us to perhaps do our first one in the Rancho. In fact, I would like us to have us have the first one in the Rancho and hear from the community members, get some ideas, have an exchange, and then see what we can do to help them protect their neighborhoods as best they can.
Yeah, Mayor Salkin's staff has been working on a plan to put a schedule together. And we were planning on starting these meetings in your neighborhood, council in your neighborhood, early next year. That's the closest, as soon as we can have them scheduled, but we can, we can have the first meeting at the Rancho neighborhood.
Okay. And personally, I know it's not in our jurisdiction, but Pickwick has been a place that I've gone to for years. I know many people have. It's a wonderful, wonderful location, a lot of hockey enthusiasts, ice skating enthusiasts. It would be a travesty to lose that kind of a gem in our community. I don't really know where anyone who wants to play hockey would be able to go. After all, it's Southern California. I can assure you, it won't be an ice rink here at City Hall. Hopefully, Pickwick remains. For those who know, no. Anyways.
Inside joke.
That is all. With that, I will zip it. What is next, Madam Clerk?
Next are community event announcements. We have two speaker cards and no calls.
All right, the first speaker is Ms. Tamara Mofsesian. Again, this is for community event announcements or for people who wish to speak for three minutes and forego the five-minute oral communication card portion at the end of the meeting. Ms. Mofsesian, you will have three minutes. I'm sick.
[speaking Armenian] 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 [speaking Armenian]
Thank you. Thank you.
[speaking Armenian] [speaking Armenian]
Varta Bedian, sorry, I apologize. The last name was kind of, not on this item. Okay.
[speaking Armenian]
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Mofsesian, the concerns that you've brought up, someone will address.
[speaking Armenian]
Oh, uh huh.
[speaking Armenian]
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Ms. Varta Bedian, come in.
[speaking Armenian]
Thank you.
[speaking Armenian]
Hi, good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mofsesian, please. Ms. Mofsesian, please. Chanchu mem. Chanchu mem Hargik. Chanchu mem Hargik, please, please respect the.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and serving the city of Glendale. I'm very, very blessed. I just heard two things today, which is my main issue too, sustainability, the fire issue that happened, and federal funds. Anytime I hear federal funds available, I think the city should jump on it. If you need public help, I'm here. I'll do whatever research that we need to do. But my main concern is the water. I live on the hillside. I have, behind me is a huge mountain. I have pressurized sprinklers that have to, you know, make sure that the mountain is not dry. But then again, you know, we don't have water. The city of Glendale, you are penalized if you use water. So what do I do? The fire department comes and sends, oh, you have to trim your trees. But I don't want to keep them dry. I don't want to spend extra money on a mountainside. So I think use your federal funds, try to get water to the city of Glendale. We should not be one of the cities that are going to run out of water or we're going to be penalized for using water. I want to be able to use it. I want to maintain the mountain behind me so that we don't have fire issues, absolutely. But yet, we need your help. Go after the money and, you know, solve one issue at least for the city of Glendale and its people.
Thank you, Ms. Varta Bedian.
Thank you.
All right, there are no more cards. Do we have callers?
We have one caller.
All right, let's go to the phones.
Our one caller is Edwin. Edwin, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, good evening, councilmembers. I'm calling today just to remind you guys and everyone Glendale community about going to be coming up for Halloween. It's going to be the Haunted House, which will be taking place at the American Legion Post 377. And the address is 10039 Pinewood Avenue, Tohanga, California, 91042. Separate from that, and my question for you councilmembers is, how do you guys plan on conducting business with neighboring cities like Los Angeles? Specifically, Kevin DeLeone District, 14th District of Eagle Rock, where Glendale is neighbors with Eagle Rock. That's an interesting question that I like to see. How do you guys plan on doing business? Especially the fact that the heat's been turned up for Kevin DeLeone to resign. And that's pretty much about it. And I think people should all go trick-or-treating at Kevin DeLeone's house and knock on the door and say, trick or treat, the taxpayers are here to get their money back. It's time to resign. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there are no more cards or callers for that portion of the meeting. Clerk Abadjan, what is next?
Next are action items. Action item A, Community Development Regarding Review of Recommendations for Streamlining the Historic District Designation Process. One, Motion to Approve Recommendations Related to Streamlining the Historic District Designation Process and Initiate Amendments to Glendale Municipal Code Section 30.25.030.
All right, great. And for those who have come to the chambers this evening to talk about this issue, you may fill out a public comment card in the end of the room on that small table and hand it to the clerk to be able to speak on this item, or you may call in and comment. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Galanian to introduce staff.
Mayor Salkin, Member City Council, this is a step in the right direction towards streamlining this very important process. And I'm going to turn it over to Jay Platt, our Principal Planner and Resident Historian, to present the item for your consideration, including some recommendations.
Good evening. We're here tonight to go over a process that council had directed staff to look into, a way to compress the time period that it takes to go through the process of designating historic districts in Glendale. That timeline had expanded somewhat over the years, and we're now making structural recommendations to change the code to tighten up the actual process as written. And then I wanted to remind the council that through some staffing changes, we actually have more staff available to help work on these issues. So the big picture issue is, we think between the code changes that we're recommending and the additional staffing, we're going to be able to shave a considerable amount of time off the process. I can't tell you exactly what that time will be. It's going to vary from district to district because some districts will take longer than others. But I think it will get us closer to the early years of districting in Glendale when it was about a year and a half, two years, two and a half years seemed to be the range of some of our earlier districts. And that would be a goal to work toward, certainly. The current process, and let me see if this clicker is working. It is not. Yes, it is, slowly. Going way back in time, and I'm going to give you a very brief presentation, but little introduction so you have some context. In 2003, 2004, the city made an effort to create a historic district ordinance focused on the Cumberland Heights neighborhood in northwest Glendale. Ultimately, that process didn't go over very well. It led to some confusion in the neighborhood, in the community. And the city pulled back and said, let's rethink this process. Let's create a new system to do this. Let's have a consultant come in and prepare historic district guidelines to give people some certainty about what kinds of changes might be looked at with a greater focus in a historic district. And in 2006, council initiated the process that we currently are using. And looking back at the genesis of this process, it came from this period of a lot of confusion, a lot of concern. And, and it created many, many steps in the process that I'll show you on the next slide. And it was kind of a belt and suspenders approach where we were making sure that everyone was heard and that there were many steps in the process. The proposed recommendation isn't a radical re-envisioning of that, and there will still be many steps in the process. It will not be an overnight situation, as it shouldn't be. And there will still be many opportunities for public input and public outreach. HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, has reviewed this process and recommended unanimously that council approve this. Basic gist of what I'll be talking about is that we're recommending consolidating a few steps that are in the current process, eliminating a couple of steps in the current process, establishing a few timeline goals for staff to meet to kind of make sure this is moving forward at a consistent pace. And if ultimately, at the end of the evening, council directs us to either approve or move forward with the staff proposal or makes any recommended changes, we'll be coming back with code language because we have to amend Title 30, the zoning code, which is where the historic district ordinance lives. So we'll be going to the Planning Commission first and then coming back to council if you choose to initiate the process tonight. Here's a slide, maybe, that shows our existing historic districts. As well as, we have one, the existing districts are in the darker color. We have the pending Bellhurst District in the center, which is actually being surveyed as we speak. So that's moving forward through the current process. We have a proposed Verdugo Woodlands District that's being called Selvast de Verdugo in the Woodlands area. That will be the first district if this process is approved that would move forward under the new process. And then we have interest in an area kind of south of South Cumberland Heights that we're not going to call South, South Cumberland Heights, I hope. And that, that's, that's basically just, the neighbors have shown interest. And I wanted to just let you know that historic districting continues to draw interest from our community members. So here's the chart that I try to condense everything onto one page, and this looks kind of insane. I will be breaking this down so that it's a little more digestible. But the idea is that everything that's highlighted in a blue box means there's an opportunity for public input. Most of this will be through community meetings and through hearings. But there will also be, we're recommending to have one petition go forward where we actually, where people actually go forward to people's homes in proposed districts and ask if they support the district. And that will come back to council as kind of a more objective way of analyzing whether a district is something that the council is inclined to approve. So what I'll do is just quickly go through a few of these. There's a lot of detail in the staff report that I won't be able to cover talking to you tonight, but of course, I'll be available for questions if, if you have them when I'm finished running through these. I'm sorry, there's, I'm not sure which direction I should be pointing this thing. The first two steps of the, the format of this is the existing process is on the left, the proposed process is on the right. The first two steps are pretty The first two steps are pretty basic, no changes recommended. We receive a historic district application from members of the community, and staff looks at that, and staff makes a recommendation that ultimately goes to the Historic Preservation Commission. The next group of steps is one of the first places where we're consolidating and eliminating. So this is the first major step toward streamlining. Currently, the Historic Preservation Commission reviews the application and staff's recommendation. And separate from that, there's a community meeting that's held. The Historic Preservation Commission meeting isn't noticed for reasons we can talk about if you are interested in that. What we're recommending, our experience over many years of doing these districts, we now have our nine designated districts, is we're trying to base some of what we're recommending on our actual experience working with community members and working, taking districts through the process. We find there's a lot of overlap between the first HPC hearing and the first community meeting. We're kind of presenting the same information, a lot of the same people are attending both meetings. We're not trying to reduce the opportunity for public input and comment, even though it may look like that by consolidating these two meetings. But one thing we've realized through the pandemic is with the new opportunity for people to, to come to a meeting without coming to the meeting, to listen, to watch on TV, to call in, have their voices heard, that's something we weren't able to do in any of our community meetings. And we also have the opportunity for these meetings to be recorded, so people who may have missed it can still catch up in the ongoing process and, you know, inform themselves of what's going on, and as the process moves forward, choose whether or not they want to come back in and participate actively or not. So we're recommending consolidating those two meetings. We also had a petition that was circulated after the HPC meeting and after the community meeting. This was a petition asking the city to have a survey done. It required that the owners of 25% or more of the properties in the proposed district sign the petition asking for this survey. For every case that we've seen, it's been a very easy sell, it's been a very easy process. There hasn't been controversy with the signature gathering, and we found, we find that that step really isn't an added value to the process. We give the applicants three months to conduct that petition gathering. If they can't get to the number they're looking for, they have an option of extending it another three months. So we're recommending eliminating that step with the caveat that what if there are issues in the neighborhood? What if there's active opposition at the very early stages of a district, which we haven't seen in any of our recent districts? We really only had strong opposition to the first district when Royal Boulevard was being considered. But we wanted to put in a step that if at the HPC hearing, they hear from the community that, hey, we're not all on board, we really have questions about this, HPC can actually ask for that petition to go, come back. So HPC could say, based on the circumstance that we're hearing, we really want to hear that number. We want to make sure there's enough support before the city starts investing money in conducting a survey. So this is the first, the first kind of condensation to help with the streamlining. And, oh, it changed. So if we move forward with this proposal, the next two steps will, will stay similar to what they are. When we do surveys, we go to an outside firm to conduct the survey. There are a bunch of historic preservation consulting firms in the LA area. We send out a request for proposals to all of those firms on our list. They come back, whoever chooses to bid on the process or on the project submits their bids, staff reviews those bids, we put together an in-house committee, so we get different voices and different people kind of looking at the different bids. We come up with a staff recommendation that we're ultimately going to bring to council. So that step, we recommend being the same. We're adding a couple of timelines to that step. These are recommend, these won't be rigid timelines in the code because we've been advised that that's not a good idea, but we're going to make them timelines that are, we're going to follow them. And if we don't, I believe you'll hear from the community within seconds of our missing any of the deadlines, so I'm not too worried about this. One timeline will be for our issuance of the RFP. The other timeline would be for us to select the bidder within 60 days or 45 days. Once that selection has been made, we're going to bring this back to council. So this will be the first opportunity for council to hear from, about this project, about the historic district. And council's job at that point is to authorize the funding because we don't have a line item in the community development budget for this, so it comes out of the general fund. And you'll also authorize us, if you, if you agree with the selection of the bidder, you'll tell us to go into, enter into a contract with the bidder. If you wanted us to select another bidder, you know, that would be at your discretion also. We've also built another safety valve into this. So say, when HPC hears this, the opposition, let's say, or the concerns or questions in the community haven't risen to the surface yet, when we come to council, if, for example, you have, you start hearing things from your constituents, you have the opportunity to kick back to that first petition asking for the survey, which will give you a sense of how much buy-in is there in the community before the city invests in the survey. Surveys historically are not a huge ticket item compared to many things that council considers. $50,000, $80,000, could go up to $100,000 for, or more for a larger district, of course, but it would be in that range typically. The next step, if, if council does authorize the funding and we enter into a contract, is we start working with the consultant to create the draft historic resource survey. We've added a, another timeline into this so that we have a 45-day window where staff will prepare the contract and, and put it for the city attorney's office for review. After that, it has to be reviewed by city attorney and finance. When that process is done, we actually sign the contract with the consultant and, and they begin their work. The timeline for a survey is open-ended. It depends on how big the district is, basically, how many properties are involved. So staff works with the, with the consultant during this time to ensure that we're following proper processes, answer questions, provide materials that are needed, and ultimately, we get the draft historic resource survey. The survey has two parts, kind of gives a history of the neighborhood, an overview of how it developed, why it looks the way it looks, how it actually looks, what kinds of properties are we looking at. And then it also does a door-to-door, property-by-property survey of individual houses, if it's a residential district, which all of ours have been so far, and gives us a detailed survey form that we ultimately will use for our ongoing design review if the district is ultimately designated. It kind of establishes a baseline for what these properties looked like at the time that we were going through the process. So after the draft resource survey is completed, right now, we have two steps, similar to the first consolidation step I mentioned. We have a second community meeting and we have a second Historic Preservation Commission meeting. Here, we're recommending to consolidate those two for the same reason we're recommending consolidating the first ones. This would have an extra step because we think at this point, HPC has enough information. The survey looks at our code, looks at the criteria that we have for designating districts, looks at certain thresholds we have for designating districts. All of that information is available in the draft survey. So we think HPC has enough information to actually not just review the survey and say, hey, we think this is good, here are a few corrections, we've heard from the community that maybe we should tweak this or change that. But I think they'll be able to make a recommendation to council at this point. And here's another step that's kind of speeding up the process. So they would make their recommendation to council at the second meeting, and they would authorize a petition. And we'll talk about the petition in just a second. Let me go back one second. Just a little preview, HPC does have the opportunity at the second hearing, again, if there are problems, whether it's problems in the community, that there isn't buy-in necessarily, or they're hearing that there's a significant percentage of people who aren't interested in a district. Or, and this is a very unlikely situation, but if HPC was very dissatisfied with the quality of the survey, they have the opportunity to ask for a third review session, going back to kind of the existing, we're trying to eliminate this third HPC review, which normally is kind of redundant and unnecessary, but they have that opportunity at this point to ask for that. So you see that on the gray on the bottom right there? And the petition circulation we're keeping, we're recommending that it be kept the same as the current situation. This is where the district proponents actually go out among their neighbors, door-to-door usually. During the pandemic, everyone came up with very creative ways to approach people at a distance or electronically. We started accepting electronic signatures on petitions. So the system has proven to be flexible to accommodate, you know, unexpected things like that. The goal of this is to ask property owners whether or not they support the historic district. So the petition is actually requesting that council designate the district. In order for the petition signatures to count, we have to have all of the property owners of a single property sign the petition. And that's an important step that's been written in very clearly into the ordinance. We're not recommending any changes to that. If the petition comes back with the signatures of over 50% of the properties, the owners of over 50% of the properties, that is the threshold in the current ordinance to move forward with the process. And then, once we hit this step, it becomes pretty straightforward. We finalize the historic resource survey, which means we just make any corrections that have been noted by community members, by staff, by HPC, by the, by, you know, anyone who's been reviewing this. Normally, we don't have a ton of issues, that's typically very minor corrections, and that's why we felt HPC could make their recommendation sooner than this. So it's kind of a formality to get the final survey ready. And then, we're recommending, as I mentioned, that the third HPC meeting be eliminated unless there were problems spotted by HPC at the second meeting. And then we have the two final steps, which are Planning Commission review and approval of the zone change, because ultimately, this is a historic preservation overlay zone, so it's not just a historic district, but we have to put an overlay on top of the existing zoning in whatever district we're looking at. And then we come to council with the final recommendation. And for that, we'll give you HPC's final recommendation, Planning Commission recommendation. We'll go over all the thresholds and of milestones that have to be met for the, for the district, and then council decides whether or not to support the district. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Sure. It was longer than I wanted.
Not the most riveting thing, but sometimes making good policy is not intended to be the most.
I got you. I live with that every day, so.
It's all right.
Do my call, well, we have some folks here who would like to speak about, on this, and we had at least one caller when we first started. How many callers are we at now?
We have three callers.
Three callers. So I think we have about, it looks like eight cards, three callers, three minutes each, which is par for the course. That's kind of what we usually do unless we have a lot of cards submitted in the interest of time. If you can be brief, great. Let's start off with the first speaker, John Schoening. Schooning, I'm sorry, John. Yeah, sometimes, I'm not going to comment on, everyone has lovely penmanship, I'll blame my eyes.
It's okay, it's my penmanship. Well, good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is John Schoening, and I am here to support the proposed updates to the historic district designation process in Glendale. There's many reasons why we all have chosen to live in Glendale. And one of those reasons, of course, is the historic nature of our neighborhoods is what sets us apart from our neighboring communities. It provides a lot of charm to the city, and that is one of the reasons that we have moved here. I firmly believe in the importance of historic districts, and I think that the streamlined procedure that Jay has outlined is an excellent one. I'm currently active in the effort to achieve historic status for the pending Bellhurst Historic District where I live. And I've experienced firsthand the long and sort of redundant process that's currently in place. I find it very, we found it difficult to kind of explain to the public how the process worked and why there were multiple steps that seemed to be doing the same thing over and over again. So I think that this new, the new regulations, the new updates will help eliminate that problem, it'll be easier to explain to people. And I do believe that, as Jay said, this current process, while it does consolidate the process, there's still plenty of time for public interaction and public feedback to, for everyone to make their ideas known. So basically, I'll be brief, but I would encourage the council to adopt the proposed updates. I think they're very good, and I think they're very good for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next is Damian Sullivan, followed by Lilia Abagian.
I always call them sirens. Thank you for having me, everybody. Thank you, mayor. Ellen, Paula, Mara, Dan, good to see you all. I just want to say that I support this, and I think it's wonderful. I think this city has riches that are, oftentimes, people don't even know, there are treasures that are right under our feet. I make videos all the time on YouTube, and I take my family and friends and I show them places. I don't know if there's, there's a, there's a neighborhood just in the hills, over by the H, that people refer to as Sinatraland, because it's actually a whole neighborhood of two or three streets that are all just perfect, mid-century modern, post and beam, a lot of them designed by the famous architects that created case study houses. And you could film Mad Men there, it's just this perfect place where it's just a completely restored Frank Sinatra, Dean Martin Wonderland. That could be a future neighborhood that I think, what's great about what, what these historic districts do is they, they, they increase the property values, they increase the, the interest in, and if you, if you look at Bungalow Heaven in Pasadena, people go there, I take my kids there this week to walk around the streets. These enrich and increase the value of the city financially and culturally. And we have so many beautiful places like Rossmoyn, my parents' house when we moved in on Cedar Street, the, the house next door was the house where Howard Hughes bought the house for Terry Moore, the actress in Her Family, and him and Cary Grant would walk up the streets in the 30s. And it's, we, every, every neighborhood in some of these areas have treasures that are so valuable, and I think anything that can streamline this process and make it happen so we can celebrate the work that the gentleman that just spoke, these are people that need to be rewarded because what they do is an asset. They're doing everyone in this city a favor by fixing, restoring, and treasuring these houses, raising their value, sometimes taking out work that other people have done to change the architecture and to change the, the character of the buildings. They go at their own expense for years and put these things back. They put back the cornices, they put back the driveway, they take out work that other people have done that damaged these properties. I think we should reward these people by giving them a streamlined process to reward their hard work and let them enjoy the labors of their, their effort. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Lilia Abagian, followed by John Schwab Sims.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Kasakian and council members. As a long-term Glendale resident and a homeowner, I would like to voice my concern with this current proposal. Glendale is a beautiful city, and we all want to preserve it. But Glendale is a city that is still developing and growing. Glendale attracts youth, innovators, young families, and intern businesses because they see the potential of this city, its continued development, and the benefit of living here. Our city did not become one that deserves preserving by limiting its growth too early. Valuing the uniqueness and history of this city is very important, but artificially limiting residents' ability to develop the city or to portray their own uniqueness will not protect the city. It will hamper the continued involvement of the city that has made it what it is today. While our city has a rich history and some districts should be preserved as historical districts, the determination should not be by a simple majority. A historical district imposes limitations on families, homeowners, and residents. Strict limitations which should not be imposed, especially on those that disagree unless there is a supermajority agreement that it is appropriate. I believe a higher percent of at least 80% is more appropriate than a mere half. Thank you very much.
John Schwab Sims, followed by Joanna Pringle.
Thank you for having me. Dear, dear Mayor Kasakian and members of the Glendale City Council, my name is John Schwab Sims. I'm president of the Glendale Historical Society and also a co-applicant for the pending Bellhurst Historic District. As you may be aware, I sent a letter to you expressing TJHS. As you may be aware, I sent a letter to you expressing TJHS, TJHS's position on the proposal to streamline the historic district process. You may have noticed this probably be the shortest letter that we've ever sent into the council. Very short. The reason why it was pretty short is pretty clear. In short, we are fully supportive of Jay's recommendations. I'd like to fully commend Jay for his work on that. His proposal removes inefficiencies, and it also specifies turnaround times for the issuance of the RFP and contracts for the historic survey. Most of all, all of these changes still ensure that the neighborhood voices are heard and concerns can still be raised in various venues. We all know that the current process takes too long, and it may dissuade some neighborhoods from actually starting the process, which we know that historical districts are good for Glendale, especially in light of SB 9, SB 10. These changes will help further protect the character of our historic neighborhoods and foster stronger bonds between neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Joanna Pringle, followed by Annette Ara-Kalian.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and council members. My name's Joanna Pringle, and I live in Verdugo Woodlands. I'm here tonight in strong support of the proposed changes that would simplify the historic district review process. We're trying to create a historic district in my neighborhood. I'm the one, I'm one of the lead applicants, and I entered into this knowing how much work it would be. But I didn't really understand how redundant many of the steps were until I saw the comparison between the current and the proposed process. I support a historic district in my neighborhood, not just because the Woodlands is special in terms of its natural and built environment, but also as someone very worried about our heating climate. I've spoken to you before on behalf of Glendale Environmental Coalition, and although I've not asked that organization to speak on its behalf tonight, I'm confident that the goals of our historic, of historic preservation are consonant with its mission. I've always had a hard time seeing well-made houses basically thrown into the trash to allow for nuance. Landfills like the one that will soon be closing in Shoal Canyon are chock full of construction debris. Indeed, construction and demolition waste account for 25% of Glendale's waste stream. Anything that prevents dumping more material into a landfill is good for our environment. And the benefits of our climate, benefits to our climate of reusing and renovating buildings still outweigh the benefits of constructing even new energy-efficient structures. Historic districts do not freeze places in time. They allow additions and alterations, and properties can grow with families. ADUs and JADUs can still be built, but change occurs in a much more sustainable way and in harmony with the property and the neighborhood. I want to thank the city staff for doing such a good job on the proposed changes. I urge you to approve them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Annette Ara-Kalian, followed by Kathy Yurka.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and council members. My name is Annette Ara-Kalian, and I live in the Verdugo Woodlands, and I'm on the Neighborhood Association. I'm here to ask you to please support streamlining and simplifying the historic district review process. My neighborhood is in the early stages, as you saw, of applying to become a historic district. The current regulations are a long and amazing thick of requirements, and the redundancies are eliminated with the current changes. I'll share that I'm a quality executive with one of our largest healthcare organizations in Southern California. One of the things I do is performance improvement and streamlining and looking for lean processes. And Jay, that was a really nice job. So you get an A+. So if you want to, very good. We can still talk. There's always opportunities to learn and improve, but I'm glad that you learned and improved from 2003, was it? 2008, and we're continuing to make processes better. And as you mentioned, the most important thing is that everyone in the neighborhood knows what's going on. And I want to assure you that I and other supporters have made sure that we've gotten information out to the community. We've done two presentations about the district and its process and an overview of the zoning process over Zoom. We've also provided notice, notices to our members around what that would look like. One of our presentations is available on the internet on our website, so anyone could Google it and find that information and listen and be informed. In addition, in our most recent newsletter, and we can make it available for anyone who would like a copy, and it'll be also posted on our website, we sent to every property within our air proposed district a giant cover story about the proposed historic district and where to get more information. So information is out there, as well as I can tell you when I'm walking my little dog, everybody in the neighborhood hears me about, hears about the historic district process. So the, we can, as we saw, the process for creating a historic district is still pretty labor-intensive and has many steps, even with the proposed changes. But five years is too long to leave a neighborhood hand-hanging. It really is. Trust me, it is. Please vote tonight to simplify the process and help property owners preserve the wonderful character of the, of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Yurka, followed by Patrick Masiehi.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and members of council and staff. I too want to commend Jay on a really terrific job. I did want to communicate a little bit of our Historic Preservation Commission discussion on this, especially the condensing of the community meeting and the HPC meeting. We had discussed ways to make the HPC meeting less formal so that it would be, feel more like a community meeting. The chair gets to set the rules of engagement. And so, for example, we discussed not having three-minute time limits. People could speak more than once. If you pose a question, you would be insured of an answer to the question, which is not how it works currently. So having sat through a lot of community meetings and a lot of HPC meetings relating to historic districts, I think that this combination is a much better way to handle it. There is a sense that creating a historic district should be difficult, that it should involve some effort and commitment from those who want it to occur. And I would say that it is, and it will continue to be even under the streamlining ordinance. The hardest part by far is actually just getting hold of people. You knock on doors, you knock on doors again. You, I remember, I was the lead applicant for the Neodriera Drive Historic District. You go back and back trying to find people at home. I would do a lot of deliveries of notes to all addresses. I would either do it by hand, or usually I would end up, or not usually, but often I would end up leaving it in a mailbox or under a doormat because I couldn't get hold of people. In our district, eight out of 32 households, households did not sign the final petition. That does not mean that eight households were opposed. Two were opposed. One just wouldn't, just wasn't interested. She told me right off the bat that was that. One thought about it but decided if we became a historic district, he might not be able to park his RV in his side yard. I told him to ask Jay that no one cared about that, but he just thought it was a risk, and so he didn't sign. Two other households signed the first petition but not the second. One was ill, and she just told me she couldn't see me. One was a co-applicant, and I have no idea what happened with her. She finally got in touch with me about signing, but I had just, the day before, turned in the petition because we were already at the six-month mark. Three people I just never got a hold of. I just couldn't. The fourth property doesn't matter. But my point is there are all sorts of reasons that people don't sign the petition, and it is not because of opposition. In my experience, we had a vast majority of supporters, two opponents, and people who were essentially fine with it, or fine enough not to object and not to contact the city. And I just want to say about that 50% threshold, it is not that it is approved at 50%, it just triggers council review. And so, given the amount of labor involved in contacting people, I would urge you not to change that number. People have been successful and are really adamant about getting more signatures, but I don't think you want to just say you fail at this point. And the last thing I'm just going to say, as the person who created Neodriera, really what you want in doing this is for people to be happy with it. And that's part of what the communication is. So thanks for your patience.
Thank you very much. Patrick Masiehi, and then we have three callers.
Mayor Kasakian and member of city council, Patrick Masie, Glendale resident. I'm here to also support this measure wholeheartedly. When you think about historic districting, it all, it's all about preserving the actual architecture of that neighborhood and all the beautiful homes that exist in that neighborhood. There are misnomers and, you know, rumors flying in this city about what you can do and what you can't do in a historic district. And I think Ms. Pringle already pointed that out. You can still build an ADU and a junior ADU in a historic district. Let's get that fact straight. You can still add a second story to your house in a historic district if it matches the actual architecture of the neighborhood and that particular structure. By the way, I'm the number one opponent of second stories, as you probably know, because I've appeared on numerous design review boards voicing my opposition in my old neighborhood about second-story additions. But it is allowed under the rules and guidelines that exist. Overall, historic districts are beautiful. A gentleman talked about walking in different neighborhoods and looking at different homes. We walk in different neighborhoods ourselves, and we enjoy it because every time you walk on a new street, you realize the beauty of that street. And I encourage people to actually get out and walk, and then they will realize how beautiful these homes are. For those that want to tear down a beautiful home and build a cube structure, maybe this is not the right place for it. And again, there are other neighboring cities that allow that type of things to go on. We see it all the time, where, you know, a beautiful ranch is torn down and somebody builds a cube design because they want to have a cube design, but it is what it is. In Glendale, we want to preserve the beauty, the beauty of the city. And again, we have wonderful neighborhoods. I encourage people to get out and actually do some walking in different neighborhoods, and then they'll realize how beautiful it is. So I do support this measure. Thank you, Mr. Platt. Wonderful job, and I hope you guys will pass it. And again, 50% plus one is more than fair. I know there's voice, we heard somebody's comment tonight about 80%. I think that is totally unfair to push it up to that level. I think the existing 50% plus one will suffice, and I hope you guys will agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to the callers, please.
Our first caller is Robin Faye. Robin, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. My name is Robin Fye, and I'm the Chair of Historic Preservation for the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association, and I was the lead applicant for the recently designated Casa Verdugo Historic District. On behalf of the Rossmoyn Mountain HOA, I'm calling in strong support of streamlining the city's historic district designation process. As you may recall, it took over five years for Casa Verdugo to get its final vote by city council this past January. Consolidating two petitions into one will greatly lessen the confusion and frustration from homeowners who don't understand why they have to sign two documents years apart to essentially say once again that they support their historic district. We also feel that combining HPC meetings with community meetings will save time for staff as well as homeowners while giving everyone the opportunity to learn details and get their questions answered. This would result in a more transparent process as well, since commissioners will be present to hear the issues and concerns from the public in person as opposed to having them relayed later by staff. Historic district designation is a community-driven process which requires a professional assessment to move forward, demands a majority homeowner's support to be enacted, and which has been in place for over 15 years in Glendale to much public support. And we believe the streamlined process will be less frustrating for homeowners, less cumbersome for city staff, and will better allow citizens to recognize and preserve Glendale's historic neighborhood. I thank you for the opportunity to comment. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. There was a card submitted, and I'm inclined to take this card because perhaps I wasn't clear in how I like to conduct these meetings. So Ms. Vartabedian, you may approach the podium and address the council for three minutes. And for anyone else, normally, once we are about five speakers into comments, we no longer will accept new cards because that's about usually 10 minutes in, and that's enough time for everyone who wants to speak to be submitting their cards or making their calls. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening again. And thank you for allowing to speak because I would 100% oppose such a thing. I'm so sorry. For someone who comes in and says it will increase real estate values, I do not think so. If I am to buy a property and they say there's going to be a historic preservation, then I would probably run away from that. I don't see Beverly Hills having so many historic preservations. I do respect, but it doesn't mean that all the people that are complaining here today, they have the 1920s cars in their garage. Life moves, moves forward. I don't want to just see that we cannot touch the existing. We have to, I want to see beautiful buildings. Sometimes you buy a house, it's 100 years old, termite has already destroyed the house. You have no other choice but to bulldoze a house and start new. So why don't, why do we have this fight against what's new, but yet we have to use our cellphones and we have to use all media and everything else towards whatever is for their advantage, but we want to live in the past? Somebody, Howard Hughes, has lived in a property, so what? I lived in my property. I am as important as Howard Hughes, then you have to make my house historic too? This is really not acceptable for me. I cannot imagine the city of Glendale limiting itself instead of growing and following and becoming more new, and then we just want to keep and live in the past. I don't think so. I don't want to live in the past, and I hope you, you understand that this process to just say 50% plus does not represent majority. It's impossible. If you accept this, I, I cannot even imagine how 50%. What you're saying is 50% of the people have to shut up. That's not, that's not acceptable. You have to keep it at 80 or 85%. Thank you. Thank you for your time, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Next caller.
The next caller is Taryn Lizer-Goop. I apologize for, if I mispronounced your name, please correct me. You're on air, and you have three minutes.
Hello. No worries. That was a good actually. Thank you. So I'm, I've been a homeowner for about 10 years here, and I have a tech startup here. And inherently, it just adds more limitation. We want to bring in more, more people to, more employees, more developers, more creatives into the city, and it's just, it feels like it's adding a limitation. Like 50% is not enough to determine if a district should be historical or not, and like the limitations it's going to bring. And looking at like the square footage of Glendale, it's about 30 square miles, and areas highlighted, it's about 5% of Glendale is already defined as historical. With this new process, it's going to get to like easily 10 to 15%. That inherently reduces the value of the definition of what historical is. Like historical doesn't have any value anymore. I feel like it's artificial. It's actually confusing for us homeowners why homeowners have to be put through explaining what already is a confusing idea inherently. So I'm for increasing that to 75% or more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Carol Atarion. Carol, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm calling to support my, to express my very, very strong support for Action Item 8A, streamlining the process. First of all, I just wanted to say, Jay Platt, you're always riveting and engaging. I, I.
Thank you.
As were, I agree, agree with the speakers that spoke in support of the action item. I just want to add, I'm a 42-year resident of Glendale, 32 years in Bellhurst Park. I went door to door. We're working on getting a historical district in our neighborhood. Since that time, since it's been such a long time, it's been a few years, we've had many property owners move, so we have to start over in that way. There's been a tear down, and there have been some alterations to the houses. So it So it, as someone before me said, it does get difficult and redundant. And to everyone that spoke tonight and to the city council, I'd like to invite you to our upcoming walking tour in the Bellhurst Park area, just so you can see how beautiful these homes are and how unreplaceable they are. And again, please vote to simplify the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Ani Minatsakhanyan. Ani, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Ani Minatsakhanyan. I'm the vice president of outreach for the Glendale Historical Society and an architectural historian. I'm calling today to express my strong support of the streamlining of the historic designation, district designation process that's forced by Jay Platt. Hi, Jay. And so the historic district preserve the character of a city, like many speakers have already said, and they maintain the architectural integrity of each and every neighborhood. So it really helps develop a greater sense of pride in one's community. And as others have said, historic districts really help raise property values. There has been more investment opportunities in properties through incentives like the Melvast contract, and it encourages tourism and promotes future homeowners to move in. And there's also social and psychological benefits for residents in historic districts that can't be covered in three minutes. So finally, I just want to touch upon the subject of sustainability, since it's been mentioned before. We often hear that the greenest building is the existing building, so streamlining historic districts also helps support sustainability goals through historic preservation planning. These historic districts usually reduce material and resource consumption and consumes less energy than the demolition of construction of new buildings. So I strongly support this, and I hope you pass this recommendation. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Any other callers or speakers?
We don't have any other callers.
Great. Thank you. Let's hear from my colleagues. Councilmember Devine?
Thank you. I don't have any questions per se, just comments. Thank you, Jay Platt. I mentioned to him that I had heard nothing but good things about him for the last three days when this procedure came out, or the changes came out. So I'm glad that you're hearing those again. Even with the changes, this seems to be a very arduous process, and due diligence is done. And I guess I should start by saying that, you know, I really, I think we all, we all realize the importance of retaining our historic resources. I mean, I've had friends come to Glendale and, you know, just driving through the neighborhoods, and they just can't believe some of the beautiful neighborhoods that we have, and that's because of these historic properties. I think the safeguards are good that you've implemented. You've not taken away the public ability to voice their opinions, and HPC still has the ability to, of course, voice theirs and have a real input into this process. I think it's always good. Timelines are good. I think people appreciate a date certain. I know all of us are always asking, is there a date certain for this? And, you know, if we are, well, we don't know. It's kind of discouraging, so I'm glad that you put some timelines in there. I know you're not 100%, you know, sticking to those or having to abide by those, but I know you'll do your best. I think 50% plus one is more than adequate. I think it's fair. It's been working all of these years, and I don't know that we've had too much of a problem. So I appreciate the work that staff has done, and I appreciate that the historical society is backing this and supporting this, and the HPC has done the same. And so I would be absolutely in favor of these changes. Thank you.
Let's remember, Asatryan.
So I'll start off with saying I love the changes that you've made. Getting rid of the initial petition particularly and any of these duplicate steps that they need to take is important. I think the process is missing one key element, and that's kind of an education notice that goes out to residents. The current process has this, you know, I asked staff to send me a copy of the notices that go out to residents, and it looks like a legal notice that, to be honest with you, somebody that is not familiar with the process is just going to not understand what it is. So what I'd want to see in this process is perhaps before step three, that there's some education mail piece that goes out to all the residents that are going to be impacted, noting that this application has been submitted. I think that notice also needs to specify what it means for a district to become historic. And the reason for that is, you know, I'm imagining this being a kind of a campaign where residents are going around neighborhood by neighborhood and door-to-door, telling their neighbors how this is going to be something that's going to be beautiful for their neighborhood and upkeeping that beauty, which I think we're all for. What I've seen in the past is neighbors and residents be surprised that when they go to then renovate their home, they're surprised to see that they have to stick with certain kind of windows. You know, I asked staff if there is a price difference between a regular versus a lot of the materials that would be required for these historic homes. They did confirm that it's most of the time much higher. And so what I want to make sure is that this education piece that goes out not only highlights the positives of this, but creates a transparency in what would be required of these residents so they're not blindsided by, you know, once it becomes a historic district. I think it would be important to also note, you know, city attorney, I believe the legal language is required in these notices, but, you know, coming up with something that's more eye-catching, that's more educational, I think would be worthwhile. I just want a transparent process. And then the petition language that's circulated should potentially also have language in there that specifies the effects. And then, you know, it takes four out of five council members to approve the historical district, and, you know, going with that, I would propose that a 70-75% instead of the 50-plus-one would be more adequate. I do want to talk with my colleagues about the signature verification process. I don't think any government body takes on signatures on petitions without verification. My understanding is from staff that there is no verification process for this. And I think that's it, but I think you guys have done a wonderful job, and I love that you've removed so many steps. I had initial concerns about the meeting being moved into a more formal body and location, but I think depending on the kind of outreach we do and making it available for people to participate over the phone would be worthwhile. I also want to note that I think, you know, I keep hammering at this, the notices should be in different languages and not just in English. And I think that's all I have, so I'd love to hear from my colleagues on these as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian, and then councilmember Protman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was on the council in 2006 when we voted for these historic districts. And when I voted for this, I wanted to make sure that this was a thorough process and that there was plenty of outreach to all affected homeowners. And that's perhaps why it's being seen as a little bit cumbersome at this point. This is a big decision for a community to make, and I want to make sure that whenever a historic district is created, that everyone knows what's going on. Jay, looking at your streamlined program here, so all those steps, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, are going to be done before you know that there's a threshold of homeowners in that community that want the historic designation. Is that correct?
That's true.
But, I mean, look at all that work you're doing. Don't you think that you should find out ahead of time before you do all that work? I mean, I can come without any support or with just a few people that say, oh, yeah, the whole neighborhood supports it, and there you go. You have your application review, HPC community meeting, bidder recommendation, council authorizes funding in the contract, then you do the historic resource, then you have the second HPC meeting, and then guess what? Oops, we don't have as many people as we thought. So I think that's a problem. I think that's a problem. I think it's a lot of work for staff, unless I'm reading this wrong.
Well, we did build in what I was calling the kind of relief valves of HPC at its first meeting, getting the tenor of the community, and then requiring the first petition, which is one way to objectively see how much support is there. If that were a concern, you could ask for a higher percentage than 25% on the first petition if that were required, but we're recommending not to do it in most cases if we don't hear that. And then council, at step five, when you're authorizing the funding, you also have the opportunity to kick it back, to ask for that petition before you make your decision on whether or not to fund it. So fairly early in the process, not right at the beginning, but fairly early, you do have an opportunity to kind of look for that buy-in, I guess.
Yeah. I'm, in a way, not in a way, but actually, I'm in line with councilmember Asaturian. If we're only going to have one petition, I think it has to be more than 50-plus-one. I'm not sure 75 is the proper percentage, but if it's just going to be one shot, I mean, I know how neighbors get petitions put in front of them and they sign them, not on this issue, on, pick any issue, and they sign without really knowing what's going on. In fact, since we're on the subject, Mr. Kasakian lives in a nonhistoric district. I live in a historic district. What can he do that I can't do? What extra steps do I have to do that he doesn't have to do in terms of home remodeling, home modification, home window replacement? I mean, what does that all entail?
The first thing to remember is that every property in Glendale has some level of design review. It's either the citywide design guidelines apply to nonhistoric properties, or the historic district guidelines apply to the district properties, and then the Glendale Register properties, we deal with a little differently, but there aren't that many of those. In a historic district, the other important thing is no interior work is regulated through historic districting. We only look at the portions of the property that are visible from the street, so any work that's done on the back, you could put in whatever kind of window, you could put in whatever kind of addition on the rear if we don't see it from the street. But the reality is, yes, as councilmember Asaturian said, if you're replacing your windows, for example, in a historic district, by the ordinance, we do not, or by the design guidelines, I'm sorry, we don't allow vinyl windows on visible, street-facing, visible facades. We do allow them in the design guidelines on side facades if they come close to the windows. We've never had someone ask for that. People just want to use one kind of window throughout the house. The windows that we have approved in districts that aren't vinyl, aren't necessarily putting in original wood windows. We allow people to put in new windows with insulated glass that gives them the energy savings, which is, I think, a big reason why people want to replace windows. We allow fiberglass windows. We allow aluminum-clad wood windows. And if someone did come to us and say, I want to put in a wood window, it would be, yes, great. All of those options do cost more than a Home Depot vinyl window. So there are some additional costs in districts. Windows would be the most obvious one. A lot of other work, you know, roof tiles and different things like that, aren't a big change in cost just because you're in a district versus a non-district.
We have to get approval, though, don't you? Let's say I want to change my shingles. Isn't there some design review that goes on that?
The same, however, happens for any property in Glendale because of our citywide design policy, design review policy.
The same review for a nonhistoric home is that which applies to a historic home?
To some degree, yes. If a Spanish house, Spanish-style house outside of a district comes in asking to put asphalt shingles on their roof, we haven't approved that, and that's in the citywide guidelines to kind of maintain some consistency with what's there. We don't call those properties historic, but it's part of what we have been directed over the years by council and the design review board to kind of include in our design guidelines. So Glendale's different than other cities, and some of the new homeowners and some of the contractors and architects who come to work in Glendale are used to working Los Angeles or other places where even in a regular, nonhistoric neighborhood, we still have extra steps that people have to take. So sometimes those steps are a little tougher in a historic district. Sometimes there is additional cost for a district property, but here it's more comparable than it would be in other cities where it's a giant difference.
How about home replacement? Let's say I want to knock down my existing home and build a new home.
In a historic district, every property is labeled either contributor or non-contributor, and that's what happens during the historic survey. If you are a contributor and you want to tear down your house, we don't automatically say you can't do this, but we say you may have to go through a stricter environmental review process, and we'll tell people it may be harder to get the approval to do that from our Historic Preservation Commission. Staff would never be able to approve that. We would take that to HPC with the proper environmental review. Ultimately, that could come to council on appeal, and council would make a decision based on whatever the situation is.
That's not an easy thing to do.
But for a non-contributor, which, you know, up to, we require in a historic district 60% plus of the properties be contributors. So that means 30 to 40%, not usually that much, and I have numbers if you're interested, but let's say 20, 30% may be non-contributors. You can tear down a non-contributing property without environmental review. You can propose a new construction, brand-new house. It is reviewed by HPC instead of by DRB, but it's the same process, same application fees, same review process.
Do you think that every person who signs a petition for historic districting should have all that information in front of them?
We provide a lot of information. It would be impossible to provide the density of information that gives you that level of detail in any mailing that we give out, but all of our mailings have links, we're using QR codes, we have materials on our website, we're available to answer questions also.
So I've got to hit a link. You're going to give me something with a link on it?
Well, no, we'll try to distill it into layperson's language, and I appreciate what councilmember Asaturian was saying. Over the years, our materials have changed over time. We used to have a who, what, when, where kind of format to let people know about public meetings, but we still had links on those because we have pages to look at the historic district guidelines, which if I were a property owner thinking about this, I'd want to check those out. You know, that's a 180-page document. Only a few of those pages apply to any individual property because it's based on style and based on the type of work you're considering. So you can, ultimately, if you're thinking of changing your roof, you might have to read three or four pages of that document. And so we tried to make that very layperson-friendly.
So I guess my point is that there's two people affected. One person that signs and doesn't realize what he or she is signing. The other is someone who doesn't want to be part of the district, but because of 50-plus-one is bound by these rules and additional review.
Yeah, which has been true since the beginning of our districts.
Yes, but it's a more thorough, and I voted for that. Were you here when I voted for that?
I was not.
Okay. Were you part of this, or were you in another department?
I came just after. I came when Royal Boulevard was kind of in the middle of it.
Okay, so I was here before you when we did that.
You were, yeah.
I'm the old-timer. And as I said, the reason that I approved the first one in 2006, which was a big deal. 2006, which was a big deal for the city of Glendale, was because it was a very thorough vetting process, and some may have called it redundant back then, but we wanted to err on the side of redundancy, and err on the side of these repetitive motions and actions so people knew what was going on. How about the names? I don't want to get sidetracked, but I live in the Verdugo Woodlands, and I see the Selvast de Verdugo, and my wife, who's a, she's an expert in Spanish, she's a Spanish journalist, says Selvas means jungle. Would we have to vote on that?
I'm interested to learn that.
Bosque or Tierra de Madera.
It also means forest and different things, but...
That's not what she tells me.
Council would have the option, and HPC would have the option, and the consultant could also recommend a name change. In fact, with Bellhurst, the neighborhoods, Bellhurst neighborhood has two historic names, Bellhurst Park and Bellhurst Hill Slopes, two phases of the development. We recommended, let's just call this Bellhurst, because we're straddling the border, so names are flexible.
Hasn't the city formally designated neighborhoods?
It wasn't formal. Neighborhood Services years ago created a list, or a map of Glendale neighborhoods that was based somewhat on historic information and somewhat on convenience. But yes, we do have neighborhoods, and if council or HPC or even staff recommended calling it Verdugo Woodlands rather than Selvast de Verdugo, that's...
And we reminded every meeting that we are on the land of the Tongva Indians. Perhaps we can name it a Tongva name. Is that up to council as well?
Many cities have done things like that, so sure.
See, I listen. So my bottom line is, that if we're going to streamline this, the only way I'll do it is if we get a higher than 50-plus-one. I don't know if I'm at 75. I'm definitely at 2/3, and we need total outreach, total explanation to members of the community, not just a link. Everything that you were talking about, plus discussion of gutters, balustrades, porches, painting, fascia material, these are all things that are going to affect contributors in that neighborhood. Those people have to know, and that's where I'm at. Thank you, Mr.
Good news, we don't control paint color, so.
Councilmember Bratman.
Well, I support this. I think you've done a great job, Jay. I read the staff report, and I looked, and it all looked good to me, and then I thought, I'm going to check with some of my friends in TGHS, and I know when I do that, I'm always kind of nervous that they're going to jump all up and down and tell me why something isn't the right thing to do, but all I heard was great stuff. So I thought that was really very pleasant, and it shows that you've really done a great job. I think that, you know, the old process, I can understand why the old process was set up the way it was with all these redundancies, but I think what you've done is, you said, you've looked at how this has gone over the years, and you've said, "A lot of these steps just aren't adding value." So my sense is that we have a more streamlined process, but a process that's no less thorough than it was before. And if you can do the same thing with less bureaucracy, to me, that's great, right? Staff's going to save time, the community's going to save time, and we're getting the same quality result, so that's why I like it. I am okay with a process where there's some kind of an FAQ that gets mailed out to everybody in a district as it's considering whether to sign a petition, so that there is kind of consistent information about these questions of what you can and can't do. That's okay. I'm not okay with increasing the petition requirement above 50-plus-one. I think it's sufficiently difficult, as Ms. Yurka explained, to get that 50%, just for reasons that really have nothing to do with opposition, but anybody who's canvas knows how hard it is to get somebody to answer a door. So I think 50-plus-one is perfectly fine. I think your whole proposal is excellent, and I support it wholeheartedly.
I think that we are making some significant progress here. I want to address the, first of all, issue, I know someone who spoke from our audience said that, you know, we drive modern cars, we use telephones, why live in the past in these historical structures? And the answer, to me, is very simple, because any time you visit any of the places when you're traveling, when you like to go to, you know, neighborhoods with character, in whatever city it may be, what makes those places special is the fact that they have retained a part of their identity. That is more than just modernism, well, not modernism, modernism is actual, perhaps, style, but preservation doesn't necessarily mean, as was mentioned, that we are preventing others from being able to build new things. Now, the way we think of historic properties in California is relatively new, when considering some of other places in the world. I mean, California, let's face it, our community here is still a relatively new community in comparison to even places like Boston, Massachusetts, where my family first came and settled to. And the things that we are trying to preserve are a certain snapshot in time, as was mentioned, you know, obviously, this is land that was settled by European settlers, and all of the original structures that were here before they came are no longer here, right? So we're trying to preserve a certain period aesthetic. I also wonder, when you were asking whether, you know, you live in a historic area, I don't live in a historic area, I know that there have been discussions here about a home that a certain council member in the past has lived in, and it's historic for that reason. I shudder at the idea that my home will one day be considered historic, because I've lived in, I'm on the record right now that whoever buys my home after I'm gone can do whatever they want to it, because I don't think it's a historical structure, and certainly should not be...
Better not raise the bar too high on your accomplishments, then.
Well, you know, I will say that. Let them do with my home what they want. However, I do think that it's important for us to preserve what little heritage we have left. We have some amazing character homes. I was driving in Pasadena the other day, and you see all the craftsmen-style homes and things that they've done to preserve houses in both their business district and in their residential districts, and I think that's what makes neighborhoods and cities special, and certainly what makes Glendale special. As far as the amount of signatures to collect, the 50-plus-one, let's remember that this is just to get the process started. This is just to get the process started, right?
It's actually toward the end of the process. It's the final public request for you to designate the district.
But council is the one that makes the ultimate decision.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, right? So we are the ones that will decide whether there is enough of merit in an application process to designate it as historic. So I'm fine with that. I think it's important for us. My main concern is this, that, I think it was touched upon by Councilmember Najarian and perhaps others as well, which is that, when we think of historic, we think of, you're absolutely limited in what you can do. You answered some of the questions, but what if someone has special concerns, special needs? What if there is issues with, you know, it could be some things that are foreseen and some things that are unforeseen, right? You know, installation of a ramp, because someone needs to access a home in a certain way, because it wasn't designed to accommodate someone in a wheelchair, someone who's perhaps disabled, someone who has need for more light and may need larger windows. What happens in those instances if it's a historic house? How do they make accommodations for health reasons or special considerations?
Well, we have built-in reasonable accommodation requirements, so we can trump anything to make sure that that homeowner, that property owner, is able to meet the needs. Usually, that means ramps. We've had elevators installed, not necessarily in historic, but we could. We've never encountered an issue with enlarging windows for that, but if we were to, we'd have to do it, I think. We'd have to think about it. We might try to put that window on the side of the house instead of the front of the house, if that would work for that person, so we'd have some ability to try to keep the design closer to what our goals are in the district, but that shouldn't be an issue ever.
Okay. Well, I mean, those are things that are of concern to me, because I do think that there are issues that will come up. Someone may buy a home and want to make it their forever home, and then all of a sudden, something happens that requires them to make some accommodations and changes, and I've seen that in actually trying to look for a home for ourselves to buy. You see these wonderful old homes that someone has made changes to, to fit their lifestyle moving forward, or as they've aged through the house. And, you know, kudos to the individuals who will then buy the house and try to restore it to how it was previously, but I don't think a homeowner should necessarily penalize for making changes that would make them able to live and continue to want to be a part of this community.
Yeah. To date, we haven't had a lot of applications for second-story additions in our districts. That's probably the hardest thing, to find a way to do a second story that doesn't have an impact on whether the property's a contributor or not, and we often get calls from realtors asking, doing their due diligence. I have a client who's interested in buying in this neighborhood, it's historic, and our general advice is, you know, ideally, your client likes the house the way it is, and if they have needs beyond that, we tell them how to, the easiest path forward to make that happen, but we always have our review process, where we'll bring any application, whether it's for a second story or for a brand-new house, tearing down a contributor, we'll move these people through the process, and they'll always have their opportunity to be heard by Historic Preservation Commission and perhaps by council.
Okay. The other point that I want to stress, and again, I don't want to belabor this, because you already mentioned it, my colleagues have spoken about it on various sides of it, but again, within a historical district, not every house is necessarily going to be considered historic and preserved as such. You will still have the ability to make changes to properties that are not deemed historic in terms of the value. I know folks are saying, well, you know, it may impact the value one way or another, but collectively, when an area is historic, it increases the value of these. And quite honestly, I know someone mentioned, well, just because Howard Hughes, if anyone is, if anyone is a leader in aviation and has lived in a home in Glendale, obviously, that would be considered historic. One of the things that really tears me up inside is, I know that there was a home in Montrose where John Steinbeck lived for a period of time while he was working in the early part of his career, and it was not preserved. I mean, it is preserved, it's still standing, changes were made to it, but I don't know if it's been designated historic. There's a home in South Glendale where Woody Guthrie lived while he wrote songs and was doing radio programs here in Los Angeles, and God knows what's happened to that house, because again, no one deemed it historic. In terms of my own culture, the Armenian culture, which has a history of over 5,000 years, if you go to the capital city of what is considered the Republic of Armenia today in Yerevan, there is this concept called the Home Museum, Dumbtang Karan, right, where famous writers and people who've lived there, their homes are preserved for everyone to come by and see the writer, the poet, the artist, the public official or military leader who lived there, and it's preserved as a place for everyone to come and visit, and sometimes these places are within apartment buildings in the downtown area, where other people are living every day, right next to this living museum. So I think that we do need to protect more of our homes in this city as best we can. I do support the streamlining process. I commend you for working with the community and the Historical Preservation Commission in coming up with these changes, and I would support it. So with that...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I have questions, too.
There's questions.
Process, question on process. So the item before us is exactly what, to, this will come back as a, will this be an introduction of the ordinance, or how are we?
Councilmember Najarian, my understanding is the item is to initiate the zone changes, zoning code amendments, so that, from that point, they'll take your recommendations, go to draft the language, go to Planning Commission, and come back, or are you going to draft the language and come back to council first?
Yeah, we would take the final decision of council, draft the language, we'd go to planning first, and then to council.
And so when you do zoning changes, how many votes do you need?
Councilmember Najarian, so...
Four, don't you?
So to amend the code as it relates to zoning change, so to create a historic district, for example, or to create development standards for a zone, that requires four votes. To change the process, that's not, that doesn't necessarily trigger the four-vote requirement. We would look at it, but I don't, as I'm looking at it now, I don't think it's going to require the four votes.
I would recommend that three of my colleagues maybe try and sway Councilmember Asatryan or myself, because I really think, if we're going to do the streamlining, the higher percentage has to be part of the streamline.
And the education.
Or leave it the way it is.
And the education.
The education and outreach part, I would stress. I do think that as a city organization, we have to go above and beyond. Look, I'll tell you something. If the Democratic National Committee and Bernie Sanders have access to my cellphone number and are texting me at all hours about events and asking for money or donations, we certainly can find people's cellphone numbers and find ways to reach out to them. I mean, we live in a smaller and smaller world every day in terms of communication, in terms of outreach. Email, text now, phone calls, door-to-door, if we need to hire individuals to go door-to-door and put door hangers on for people to maybe cut off the postcard or detach the postcard and send it back to confirm that they received it, whatever it takes to make sure that people are aware, and in the languages that most let people speak in our community, I think is the bare minimum of what we should be doing. That should be the starting point. That should be the ground, not the ceiling, for outreach.
If I can just ask for clarification on that, we do have a lot of material, we do have a lot of information that we share with people. We could certainly do some of the things you're asking, and door hangers, if the city wants to hire people to do that. That sounds great. There will be links. I don't know how we can avoid that, so...
And that's fine, as long as there's also contact numbers for an actual live person, for someone to speak to, who can then speak to them in, you know, if they are a limited English proficiency resident of the city, can speak to them in either Spanish, Korean, Tagala, Armenian, whatever else they need, they may need, special needs accommodations for braille. Just communicate to folks on their level, is what I'm asking. I think it's the least, I think we've turned a corner in this council, we have come a long way from the days I first started as clerk. We need to communicate to folks in ways that our community members are able to understand.
And just another point of clarification, just when we did the historic district brochure, which is ready but kind of hung up because of a processing thing with our transition to a new system, we, you specifically, Councilmember Maris Kosakian asked for language translation. We added in three languages, contact information for people to call into the city to receive translation, rather than translating the entirety of the document, because we don't know who to mail that to and who not to. Would that be sufficient on our documents, to have that kind of just contact information in Armenian, Spanish, and Korean?
So the way we've done it in the past for ballots and/or ballot materials is, we'll usually have a page in there that'll say, "For information in the language that you needed in." Here's a website or a way to access it, and it just needs to be clearly stated so people know that's what it is, rather than it just saying Armenian or Espanol or whatever else.
Yeah, that's what we did for the brochure, so...
And it needs to be placed prominently in any document, so it's not buried in page five or 10 in a document. Yes, Mr. City Attorney, and then Councilmember Asatryan.
If I could just, two points, again, on the votes that would be necessary to adopt these regulations. As I sit here today, because it's the first time I've been asked, I think it would only require three votes, because there's no changes to any of the zoning or any of the development standards, it's just regarding the process. That's point number one. Point number two is that, with respect to the percentage of signatures, I just want to remind the council, because it's in the code, so it is 50% of the properties in the district, but there's, we have a charter provision, which says, any proposed district of any type of zone, not just historic, where the property owners get 50%, signatures of the owners of 50% of the frontage in the proposed district are also entitled to have their day in court, their day before the council. So we have that vote, so even if we were to increase that percentage, there is that provision in the charter, and it's in, we've incorporated into our municipal code, which says, "Now standing foregoing, a petition satisfying the requirements of Article 15, Section 2 of the Charter shall satisfy the requirement of this subsection," meaning the owners of 50% of the frontage of a proposed district would satisfy this provision, regardless of whether or not you actually get 50% of the owners. And that could be a wash, sometimes it could be more, sometimes it could be less. I just want you to be aware of that, that that's still going to be allowed, because that's in our charter.
Yeah, which means that owners of corner properties who have more frontage have more of a vote than owners of mid-block properties.
Don't ask me where that came from or why, but that is in our charter.
So in terms of Councilmember Najarian's comment, does anyone want to suggest any other figure other... other figure other than the 50 plus one? Are you fine with 50 plus one, Councilmember Rotman?
Yeah, I want to stick with the 50 plus one. If there are no other comments, I'll move the item, but, um, maybe, maybe there's some other comments.
I have some questions, actually.
Or Councilmember Osaturian?
Not contributors to a district. You noted that they can tear down a house and build a new one. Would they have to follow certain design that are similar to the historic homes that are going to be in that district?
We, we do have, within the historic district design guidelines, we have a section for new construction. It's actually very similar to our guidelines in the citywide residential guidelines, in that you're looking at a house that we don't dictate a style. We don't say you have to be a Spanish house if there are a lot of Spanish houses in the neighborhood. You could even have a property redesigned in a more contemporary style than you see in the neighborhood, as long as other aspects, its mass, its scale, the way the volumes are arranged, the way the materials are used, fit into the neighborhood. So it's a very similar review process to what DRB looks at all the time in terms of looking at the neighborhood and, and determining if something's compatible. In this case, it would be HPC.
And then would, would the materials also have to be similar to the historic homes? Again, this leads me back to, you know, residents being told that they have to use certain windows, they have to go find certain panels, there's like three companies that make them. Instead of 15,000, it ends up being 70,000, so what are we looking at here?
Over the years, the, the Design Review Board hasn't been entirely consistent on windows. There have been times when they've said, we'd like to see a higher quality window for new construction than a fire, than a vinyl window. They have also approved vinyl windows. It would be ultimately the HPC's determination of what was appropriate, but vinyl windows have gotten better in their appearance today than they were 10 years ago. And so it's conceivable that new construction in a district could have vinyl windows, but I don't want to say that HPC would ultimately be approving that. But if they didn't, it wouldn't be out of line with what DRB has been doing for many years.
So really, all of these things are the things that I think that residents need to be made aware of through the process. I think the best time to do that is before step three, before you host the community forum. I think there may be a reminder, uh, the, the, the language of the petition itself also needs to include, um, what, um, effects it may take on someone's home, because as they're signing it, I want them to see it, because I know how this works, I've done petitions a million, one times in the last 20 years, so, um, and with respect to what Mayor Kosakian noted about, uh, languages, I think you can easily translate the headings, uh, at the very least, to, to give the meat, uh, to the resident, and then, you know, if there's no space, then, um, give them, you know, the contact information or the link in other languages, but, you know, just having the phone numbers and like, hey, if you have any questions, doesn't work, but the, if, if you add the headline, so, you know, this, this project, um, impacts your, uh, home in X, Y, Z ways, right? Just shortened. So, you know, if, if, if my colleagues are okay with adding that, uh, education piece, and then I don't know where we settled on, on the percentage.
Well, I think that there's been a motion, and a second, but does the maker of the motion wish to accept those amendments in terms of education and outreach?
Um, can we be more specific about exactly what they are? I, I, I mean, the idea of sending out some kind of an FAQ or making it more, you know, understandable to the layperson, I think is a good idea. I'll leave the languages issue to staff. I don't know if you could have headings in three or four languages. You know, we would want to have English, Armenian, Korean, Tagalog. Um, I don't know if, it's Spanish, I forgot to say, yeah. So five languages, I don't know, that's going to probably make it like, um, you know, people's eyes are going to glaze over when they see that thing, so I, I don't know what the best practice is there. I think what you originally suggested, where it says, if you, you know, very clearly, if you want this information in Spanish, you, you can go here, I think that's good enough.
Well, let me ask you this, how many, what, how many, uh, homes do we have in our largest historical district currently, ballpark?
Currently, Rossmoyn is 502.
Okay. We're talking about 502 households, potentially anywhere between 500 to 700 phone numbers that you have to reach out to, to get ahold of the homeowner, right? Let's just say, either you call one phone number or another phone number on file. That is not that many phone numbers to go through. Anyone who's worked on campaigns, done outreach, can tell you that you can, uh, make pretty swift work of that. I don't mind the signature verification process of, you know, us following up with the person who's signed a document, having someone contact them and saying, you know, someone may have come to your door, there's been a signature submitted on your behalf, do you, uh, do you understand what you've signed?
That would be via mail?
No, it would be a phone call. It would be verifying the signature. By staff, yeah. It doesn't have to be you, Jay, it could be anyone else. We can get community college students, we can get someone from USC who's studying historical preservation that is one of your students.
Or we could have staff circulate.
We can't treat them as labor.
You have a lot, I thought you just said you have a lot of staff that can make this thing happen. That was your opening remark.
500 phone calls.
Mayor, council members, if I could offer a couple items, being that we have to come back a couple times still, and we still have to go back to HPC, um, maybe we can take that time to develop a few kind of sample materials and see if that is sufficient and kind of, um, highlights the kind of major pieces of information you would like us to present to the, the neighborhoods whenever someone is kind of moving forward with a historic district. Um, and same thing on how we can potentially verify, we can return with some alternatives and how, how that could potentially work.
That sounds smart.
That's fine.
And let me just ask one process question from the City Attorney. So, this, this vote on the process can take three.
The vote right now is three, and, and when we bring back the changes, that will, I think that will also be three, because there are no changes to the zoning or underlying development standards, it's just a change to the process.
But at the time a, a district comes before us for approval, you need four?
Yes.
So I could say that I'm not going to vote for anything unless there's 66% on that petition that comes through?
You, that can be your personal...
And if someone else joins me in that, then the district will not pass.
That can be your personal guiding post, that, that you would like to see more when the thing comes up.
Okay.
I would like that to be...
So I think, again, I repeat to my colleagues, I think passing this on a 3-2 vote, or whatever, 4-1 vote, is not the best course of action, that we should somehow find some sort of, uh, middle ground to make this workable in the future. I mean, you can pass this now, I see three votes here, but when it comes up, I'm more concerned, if we streamline it, to have more than the 50 plus one.
But, but Mr. Calvert has said that they're going to be working on, and with Mr. Platt and probably HPC and whoever else, you're going to be working on tweaking this and maybe adding a couple of the ideas that are floating around here for the next vote.
What I would recommend is that we return, when we come back, with some of these sample kind of outreach materials. Are we conveying the information that you would like these neighborhoods to see and understand? Are we providing enough to them so that they can make a conscious decision on whether or not to, to sign on to this, uh, district that's moving forward?
But to clarify, if, if we're making recommendations on the process that's proposed tonight and then creating code language, we were not planning to go back to HPC. We were going to go to Planning Commission and to council.
Okay.
For the sake of collegiality, everyone working together, if you want to bring back something that has a 60%, along with the 50 plus one for us to consider, that's fine, but for the moment, I'm just saying I'm fine with the 50 plus one with the council, you know, ultimately making the final decision as to what we deem as a historical neighborhood or not, after the legwork has been done by staff and, and the neighbors. So with that, there has been a motion and...
Second?
A second.
And that's with including the, maintaining the 50% plus one?
Maintaining the 50 plus one, taking on board the suggestion that staff will look at and bring back to us some suggestions for improving communications.
Right.
And verification.
What about the...
What?
Are, did you...
I was going to say 50 plus one, but can you not also bring back, because this is going to come back to us?
I, I could have two alternatives with one at 50 plus and one at 60 plus.
Sixty-six?
Sixty-six.
Fine, that's two thirds.
I mean, I'm not going to vote for it, but...
That's two thirds, that's fine, that's fine.
Most of our districts have gotten over 70% over the years, only two...
Yeah, but we just heard how difficult and challenging it could be.
Actually, the, the staff had, had, I had actually asked staff, and staff said that most of these districts have about 70% plus. Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there was only one district that had below 70%. Um, it was one district that had 57, if, if, if my memory serves me right.
You're, you're almost correct, there are two districts that were under 60, uh, one at 57 and one at 59. All other districts were at least 71 and ran all the way up to 86%.
50 plus one and 66, bring us back both options, okay? And then we'll just call the, well, not call the question, we'll go there, we'll call vote.
Okay, I'll, can we just make sure that you made the motion, you okay with those coming back as part of it, obviously, you're not bound by it?
I think it's kind of a waste of time, because, I mean, I'm not going to support more than 50, and the thing is, the district comes back, and if it's 67 or 68 or 70, if that's what they end up being, and that's what they usually are, then you should be happy. But let's not make it, let's not make it part of the requirement. That's where I am.
Here's the thing, if we don't do that now, can we add it back in later? I think it's easier to just tell staff to prepare it, have it on the agenda, there'll be time between now and then for our, our colleagues to either change their minds or to stand their ground.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
I think we're doing this in, out of respect for them and giving them, uh, the option, and then, you know, we'll let the community go out there and do the outreach, and folks outside these chambers can try to, uh, win them over to their side. Or, you know, flip one of you, who knows?
Okay.
So with that, let's have the vote.
Just in terms, I'm, I'm sorry, but just in terms of these, these changes, we can write into the code something about the communication and where the communication happens? I don't think it would be wise to write exactly what we're giving out.
I think that'll be a policy decision, it does not have to be written into it, but I think there may have to be some language that says that, you know, we need to confirm, or verify the folks that have signed. If the community members are going out collecting signatures, just like Councilmember Osaturian said, we ought to confirm that the signature is coming from the bona fide person who's on record for owning the house, not the person who's a babysitter who just happened to open the door or whatever it is. So I think confirmation of signatures is absolutely appropriate.
Now, now, I have a question now. If we do that for this particular process, are we going to have to do that with every process that we, because we ask, we get signatures for...
Speedhums, right.
Everything. And are we going to be asking staff to call these people every time?
Speedhums are higher. Speedhums are higher, preferential parking is much higher than 50 plus one.
I think preferential parking is at 75, isn't it?
Are we calling people to verify signatures?
Absolutely, I think that there's absolut, I think that is fair, and it's not, um, and we're talking about, uh, impact on, on properties and the character of a neighborhood, and, uh, I don't think it's, uh, inappropriate.
We, we have never had a complaint or a known problem of someone forging or incorrectly signing a petition. We also have a statement on the petition form saying that, under penalty of perjury, I certify that I am the person, the owner of, of the property. So we have taken, we've taken that into consideration. I'm having trouble getting my head around how staff, not me, but whoever, would obtain the phone numbers for all of these property owners in a, in a, and then, and then follow through on verifying verbally.
Well, we're now talking about the details, I'm happy to talk to you about how we can do that.
I can help as well with that.
Yeah, that is not impossible to do.
So if, if the council does vote for that, we'll put in something about verified signatures and leave it at that, and, and then work out the policy later.
All right, let's move forward.
Councilmember Osaturian?
Yes.
Rotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
I guess I make yes?
Mayor Kosakian?
Yes, thank you.
What is next?
Next, item B is being pulled off the agenda.
Can we just read that into the record so folks know what is being pulled off the agenda? And then have the next item read into the record.
Sure. Action item B, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Solar Energy on City-Owned Properties. Report to file and to authorize the General Manager of GWP to issue an RFP using engineer, procure, construct, EPC method for six proposed project sites. One, motion to note and file the GWP solar PV development on city-owned, uh, properties and DER hosting capacity analysis and update. Two, resolution authorizing the General Manager of GWP or his designate to prepare a request for proposal using the alternative project delivery method for the engineer procure, construct of solar PV systems at the following proposed project sites. One, Glendale Sports Complex Parking Lot. Two, Montrose Parking Lot. Three. Three, Utility Operations Parking Lot. Four, Brand Landfill. Five, Fire Station 21. And six, Glendale Central Library, and authorizing the city clerk to solicit proposals.
Okay. All right. Need a motion?
Our next action item, C, is City Attorney regarding findings, regarding approval of design review case number PDR 2101078 for a three-story, 82-room hotel at 1633 Victory Boulevard. One, resolution adopting a subsequent mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Two, motion sustaining the Design Review Board's decision to approve the design review case and making findings in support, in support thereof.
Okay. Mr. Galanian or Mr. City Attorney, explain to us what is here before us and what action we need to make?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the council held a hearing on September 27th to consider the appeal of the design review case involving a three-story, 82-room hotel at Victory Boulevard. Uh, the council, uh, held the hearing, closed the hearing, um, and voted 3 to 2 to sustain the DRB's decision, directed our office to prepare findings, both the resolution adopting the subsequent MND and the findings to approve the design review case are before you. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And it was also to approve it with the 82-room, uh, request, correct?
Correct, 82-room, and then the issue was the, the removal of condition number one that was imposed by DRB.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move eight, C, one, and two.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, and since I was the one who abstained during the last meeting, uh, since then, I've had an opportunity to do some of my own research and find out what the, um, appropriateness was of, of some of the claims that were made at the, um, initial hearing in terms of the type of hotel that we will be placing in the neighborhood based on the room count. My research has found that there is, uh, validity to the statements that were made here during the hearing, and, uh, with that, I will be voting for approval of this with the hope that, and, and I will say this, that there was the Glenmark Hotel on brand that a lot of people were up in arms about when it was being built. Uh, I can tell you that since its completion, I've been there a number of times. I was just there last week. There was a wonderful art exhibit by an artist, David Magritchian. Weekly, if not, you know, at least every month, there's rotating art exhibits in this hotel, there's a coffee shop, people are able to access it. Uh, Mr. Desai, I am hoping that you will do something similar to really bring in the community, help them come into and be a part of this. I know that your, uh, office is across the street from it, please do right by this community and make sure that they are included in everything that happens, because, uh, you're going to be there for a while, and so is the community, and we want them to support you as much as you're going to support them with your project. I saw that you stand up, is there something that you want to say?
No, I just wanted to address, and, uh, thank you for that, and I will do my best.
And...
Just wanted to thank you for reconsidering and just wanted to let you know that I'm going to do the best I can.
And I, I just wanted to say that I'm still voting no because of the, um, removal of the DRB condition number one. Um, I don't know about the other council members, but you mentioned the Glenmark Hotel, and one of the issues was the noise on the rooftop, and I have been getting emails that they are having a problem there, so I hope that you will not let that happen, because you are butting right up against the neighborhood, so that's all I'm going to say.
Councilmember Rotman?
Yes, I just wanted to say before we hold the roll, roll call vote, that I have also given this a lot of thought over the last week, and I will be supporting, um, the, upholding the decision of the DRB, removing the... the decision of the DRB, removing the condition number one and approving the MND.
Thank you, Councilmember Rotman. Let's have a roll call, please.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Asatirian?
Yes.
Rotman?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kozakian?
Yes. And I, listen, I just, in closing, want to tell folks, and I already mentioned this, that you're going to be a part of this community. I know the community is going to be following this very closely. I want to wish you the best of luck. Please make sure that it's a project deserving of the neighborhood. That is all. You don't have to stick around. I will say that when I was on my way to the Glendale Historical Society Gala, I ran into your son who was riding his bike around the neighborhood who recognized me from the hearing. And I said, "Don't worry, he'll be all right." He actually came up to me and said, "You're the mayor," right? He's a student at where?
Yes, he's a student at Toll Middle School. He's twelve years old and he was very excited about that interaction he had with you.
Yeah. I'm not going to say that's what swayed me. It was other research, but I do-
I sent him in on that mission, actually.
Yeah, you did, following me, right? But, you know, I do want to mention something that, you know, speaking of raising our children in this community, I came out, you know, occasionally people forward me newsletters from individuals in this community and things that are said, including, you know, individuals who will use a platform of online media or, you know, even nextdoor.com to make accusations, even comparisons to some pretty ugly historical figures. I think there was something that was referencing a video that included me and Councilmember Najarian and Hitler in his bunker. I want to say that, you know, that's not the way, that's not the best of Glendale. That's not the Glendale that I know. I want to read a line, and I'm sorry I have to do this, that, about someone sending this in regards to this and, you know, some of the votes that have happened here. Criminal Armos, the last three letters of their last name, I-N and Y-N, no surprise here, right? So, you know, to the folks who think that they're making and scoring points by putting information out there, you know, please take a long look in the mirror and ask yourselves what is making you think that that is acceptable dialogue to put out there? Why you think that makes Glendale a better place for you to live in, for your children to live in, for me to raise my child in? And ask yourself if there's a better way to have a more constructive dialogue. The work that's done up here, the votes that are cast are not necessarily easy for everyone. We put a lot of time and consideration into doing what's best for the city. We may not always agree on the ultimate votes, but I assure you that I am not casting votes here to make this city worse off for my child that I'm raising in this city. And I know none of the other council members are either. This is a lot of hours, a lot of volunteer work, so please, let's keep it civil. And I appeal to the better nature of our residents. Good luck, Mr. Desai. Please give us a great project that we can all be proud of. Next.
Next hearings, A Community Development Regarding Public Hearing on Appeal of Planning Commission's Decision to Sustain the Planning Hearing Officer's Approval of Setback and Standards Variance. Case number PVAR 1722701 for the project site located at 521 Nolan Avenue. One, motion to sustain, I guess first we, we have the hearing, so.
Okay, all right. I think you agree with both items into the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
So one, motion to sustain the planning commission's decision of April third, 2019 to sustain the planning hearing officer's decision to approve the variance with conditions. And two, motion to continue the matter directing the city attorney to draft findings reversing the planning commission's decision and deny the project.
Thank you, Clerk Kabajin. I'm sorry, I was talking to Councilmember Najarian while you were reading that into record, although I was listening to you as well. We were just clarifying that he may have a conflict still on the next item, which hasn't been read into the record. And he would, he was asking to be excused from the council meeting when we're done with this and on to the next item. So with this hearing, I would like to ask you, Mr. Galanian, to get us started and then we'll open the hearing and hear testimonies.
Yes, definitely. I'm actually going to invite Vista Izati, our planner, who's been working on this case. She's going to cover the details of the case, some details about the project, location, design, as well as the procedure and the process that the planning commission went through in coming up with their decision. Ms. Izati?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. This is an appeal of the planning, planning commission's decision to approve a variance at 521 Nolan Avenue. Oops. The applicant is requesting three variances in conjunction with the development of a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot three-story single-family residence. The three variance requests are a five-foot street front setback where fifteen feet is required, a second, the second request is for a reduced driveway length of six feet and one and three-quarter inches where eighteen feet is required by code. And the final request is to allow uncovered stairs greater than four feet in height to project into the street front setback area. The planning hearing officer also approved an administrative exception for this project for a minor deviation to allow a thirty-six-foot overall height where thirty-two feet is the maximum allowed. This AE was not, is not part of the appeal. I'm just, it's just for informational purposes. General information, so the applicant is Mr. Rodney Khan of Khan Consulting and he's representing the property owner, Ms. Matilda Hartunian. The appellant on record is Dr. Karina Chan and the address on file for her is 531 Nolan Avenue. This lot is directly to the south of the project site. The applicant, the appellant's request is that city council overturn the planning commission's decision and deny the variance requests. The subject site is located in the R1R Single Family Hillside Zone, FAR District Two, and is surrounded by single-family residences. The subject site is highlighted in blue in this image on the map and the current appellant at 531 Nolan is located to the south and highlighted in red. To the north of the site and highlighted in green is the property of the previous appellant for when this went to planning commission, Mr. Alexander Jackson. And that was for the appeal that went to planning commission in 2018. The project site itself is an irregularly shaped vacant lot that's approximately eighty-seven-hundred square feet in size with dual frontage on both Nolan Avenue and Valentine Drive. Access to the site is taken from Nolan. This lot slopes down from Nolan with a fairly steep average current slope of approximately eighty-four point five percent. These photos illustrate the conditions of the lot and the surrounding area. The first photo is a 3D aerial taken from Google Street View that illustrates the steepness of the lot. This is a common condition for lots on the south side of Nolan Avenue in that neighborhood. The top photo on the right illustrates the view from Nolan and the bottom photo is the view from Valentine. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan for the project that shows the location of the building, which is pushed towards Nolan. Were the project to comply with the required street front setback and driveway length requirements, the house, driveway and access stairs would be set back much further from the street, anywhere from fifteen to eighteen feet to comply. This slide is illustrating the requested variances. The red line shows the property line. The green line is to highlighting the requested five-foot street front setback. And the stairs and driveway area are both shown in blue on the slide. Complying with the setback and driveway length requirements would increase the visible mass of the building because the dwelling and garage would project much further away from the slope. It would have to be set back and that would end up looming over the adjacent downslope properties. This in itself is inconsistent with the city's hillside design guidelines, which specifies that new development should reflect the topography and slope. And it encourages that buildings be constructed into the hillside to minimize visual impacts for mass and scale. As proposed, the siding of the house is also consistent with setbacks in the neighborhood, which is also specified in the hillside design guidelines. The variance approval will allow for reasonable development of the site and neighborhood compatibility. Both the planning hearing officer and the planning commission were able to make all of the required findings for variance and that's why the requests were approved. This slide is just to give you an idea of the overall design for the project. This project will be required to go through design review board as well. The top two images are illustrating the view from Nolan Avenue and the bottom two illustrate the design of the new house with the context of the hillside and the topography. These sections are illustrating the overall height of the house and the design. The first section is taken from the driveway and the second section is taken from the two-story portion of the design and shows how it steps with the, with the hillside. As it relates to project history, I would like to provide a brief overview of the timeline that is detailed in the staff report. The variance and administrative exception were first submitted in 2017. The requests went before the planning hearing officer in April 2018 and the items were taken under submission for a decision at a later date. That was on July twenty-six, 2018. The hearing officer approved both the variance and the AE with conditions. For reference, those decision letters are included as exhibit six to the staff report. An appeal for the variances was submitted by Mr. Alexander Jackson on August tenth, 2018, and he is the owner of 515, which is the property directly to the north. That appeal was heard by planning commission in April 2019. During the public comment portion, Mr. Jackson indicated that a four-foot strip of land had been added to his property from the subject site and submitted documentation to support this claim. He expressed concern that the proposed house was not properly set back because it did not account for the four feet that he owned. At the hearing, the owner of 521 Nolan Avenue provided a property survey, which showed that the four-foot strip of land had been taken into consideration as it relates, relates to the required interior setbacks. All the documents received at the planning commission hearing have been included as exhibits to the staff report for your consideration. Following review of the staff report and attachments, including any submitted correspondence, and having heard all testimony at the public hearing, the planning commission voted three to one. The IPST, or the no vote was Commissioner Chang Lee to sustain the planning hearing officer's decision and approve the variance request. This decision was appealed on April sixteenth, 2019 by the current appellant, Dr. Karina Chan. So, based on the information presented at planning commission regarding that four-foot strip of land, staff investigated the matter, did thorough research on the history of the site as well as the city's subdivision ordinance, and determined that that property line between 515 and 521 had been changed in nineteen sixty-five without a city-approved lot split map, which would have been required at that time. The submitted appeal was placed on hold pending resolution of this matter. After gathering information, conducting research, meeting with owners and their legal representatives over several months to encourage resolution of those violations, both owners resolved the legal spot, lot split issue through the certificate of compliance process and that matter was concluded and resolved. Subsequently, staff moved forward with the appeal application. There are three main points that form the basis of the appeal that focus on the belief that planning commission refused to hear certain facts in rendering their decision and that inaccurate and insufficient evidence was provided. The appellant also contends that there is new evidence of material facts that were not previously presented that would have changed the commission's determination, but nothing was included with the appeal application. For reference, a copy of the submitted appeal is included as exhibit eleven with the staff report. To the first point, the appellant contends that the commission refused to hear or consider neighborhood uniformity, property uniqueness, inaccurate measurement data, and public welfare concerns. The appellant also contends that the commissioners were unresponsive to public comments regarding the inaccurate or misleading information. I will address the four points on the next slides because those are most pertinent to the appeal. But to the second contention, the hearing was conducted in accordance with established rules and procedures. In rendering their decision, the commissioners took into consideration all of the evidence provided for this case. That includes the staff report, the attachments, written public comments, and all public testimony that was received. Neighborhood uniformity is identified as the first point that was not considered. However, the appellant doesn't provide any specifications as to what that means or provide any other information. This claim is not true. The hearing officer and planning commission are required to take the hillside development review policy into consideration in their decisions, which discusses neighborhood compatibility. The main reason for the variance request is so the design will be compatible with the city's hillside design guidelines. Were the development to comply with setback and driveway length requirements, the building would project far from the slope and increase the visible mass, which is inconsistent with the hillside development guidelines. With a reduced street front setback, the access stairs that are required under the building code also have to be sited as proposed. That's the only way it'll work. This development will also require DRB approval once this is done. They are the review authority as it relates to design and part of their purview includes neighborhood compatibility. Finally, the request is consistent with the existing houses on the south side of Nolan that range in height from two to three stories, have a steep slope, and many have double frontages along Valentine Drive. So prior to rendering the original decision, the planning hearing officer reviewed previously approved setback variance requests for properties within three hundred feet of the subject site, and this was also presented to the planning commission. During the commission hearing, comments were made by members of the public regarding inconsistencies in the data being provided. Staff has since reviewed the city records available and verified the information previously provided to the planning commission. This table illustrates the research and compares past variance approvals with the built condition based on building and safety records. One final note on this, staff's analysis was related to the history of variances approved. And while in some instances those variances were not acted on, that doesn't negate the fact that they were approved and that the hearing officer at the time was able to make the required findings. Property uniqueness is the second point. However, the appellant did not provide any specifics as to what that means and no other information was included. The purpose of a variance is to allow owners with unique circumstances the same development rights as other properties. So the contention that this wasn't considered is not true. Variance finding B requires the hearing officer to establish the exceptional circumstances or conditions that apply to the property, and that did happen. The unique circumstances identified are the steep topography of the site, as well as the lot configuration of a double-frontage lot that is narrower along Valentine Drive and wider along Nolan, where many properties in that area, it's the opposite situation. The steep topography and lot configuration gives the subject site an unfair disadvantage because were the project to comply with the zoning requirements, that would cause unintentional conflicts with the city's hillside design guidelines. Complying with code will result in the house being pushed further away from the slope and that would exacerbate the building's mass and would require a driveway bridge design, which is also inconsistent with the development pattern along Nolan. Finally, the commission's decision was to sustain the hearing officer's approval with no changes, indicating that they agreed with the planning hearing officer's decision and all of the findings, including the property's uniqueness. Inaccurate measurement data is the next point, but again, there was no specific information as to what that meant in the appeal. Having said that, under the statement of additional facts at the end of the appeal form, the appellant identifies driveway length, slope, and setback as being measured inaccurately, but no specifics or material evidence was included to support this claim. Public testimony received during the planning commission hearing expressed concerns about the accuracy of the property line dimensions and that the four-foot strip of land between 515 and 521 was not considered and that the plans are therefore incorrect. and that the plans are therefore incorrect. This is not true. The plans do accurately show the property line dimensions, and no changes are necessary. The most pertinent for interior setbacks is shown in this table. It identifies the street front property line dimensions. The first is the original 1927 tract map. That is the only one that does not take into account the four-foot strip of land because this was recorded prior to that being divided off. The second is from the assessor's map, and then the submitted survey from the homeowner, as well as the project plans. And as you can see, the numbers do take into account the four feet. The next point is public welfare concerns. The appellant contends that public welfare concerns were not taken into consideration, but again, no other specifics are provided. This is also not true. One of the required findings for variance is about public welfare. The hearing officer is required to establish why the approval would not be materially detrimental to the public, welfare, or injurious to the property or improvements in the neighborhood. This was taken into consideration by the hearing officer and detailed in finding C, and the main points were first that there are no visual impacts, and the intent of the regulations to maintain an attractive neighborhood with a consistent streetscape and provide visual relief from the street are being met. Second, that the proposal is consistent with the neighborhood development pattern. Similar homes have been developed in the neighborhood that have not been detrimental to the public. Third, the stairs will be hidden from view and are required by the building code for life safety. And fourth, that the proposed design allows the house to fit within the natural topography of the site. This minimizes visual impacts, and it also minimizes the amount of grading that will be necessary for construction, and allows for the preservation of natural open space, which is also encouraged in the guidelines. Similar to the contention about property uniqueness, the commission's decision was to sustain the hearing officer's approval with no changes, indicating that they conferred with all of the findings. The next point in the appeal is that the Planning Commission was presented with insufficient or inadequate evidence, and that the subject properties and the wording used in the initial variance request were flawed and erroneously presented to the commission. Again, no specifics were provided regarding what the flawed wording was and what the inaccurate information was. It's not clear what the issue was, what needed to be clarified, so staff wasn't able to provide a thorough response to that. The previous slides and report highlighted neighborhood uniformity, noted claims about inaccurate data, and provide clarifying data from available city records for your consideration. In response to this claim, I do want to emphasize again that the hearing officer and the commission's decisions are based on all of the evidence in the record. That includes everything: application, testimony, written comments, everything. Finally, the appellant contends that they have new evidence of material facts that were not previously presented that would have changed the commission's decision. While the appellant selected yes for the response to this question, no other information or documentation was included with the appeal. During the Planning Commission hearing, the appellant did submit documentation. This is included as Exhibit Eight of the staff report for your consideration, and that exhibit also includes copies of all written testimony received for that hearing. Again, prior to rendering their decision, the commission took everything into consideration before sustaining the planning hearing officer's approval. To conclude, staff is recommending that the city council uphold Planning Commission's decision to sustain the planning hearing officer's approval of the requested variances. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Now, let's open the hearing, right? So, we'll open the hearing at 8:57, and let's have the folks, so let's have the applicant and then the appellant.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, county attorney.
So, in this hearing, the appellant has the burden of proof, so my recommendation would be to allow the appellant to go first, and then to go last at the end during rebuttal.
Okay, so that's what we'll follow. Appellant, please come forward.
Dr. Chan? She's not here?
Oh, she's not here? Okay.
If she's not here, and she didn't assign anybody to speak on her behalf, you can...
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Dr. Chan?
Yeah, we're all here for that.
Okay, is there one among you that is kind of the, going to present the bulk of the appellant's concerns? Someone has to speak for the appellant because then the applicant, alright. So, have you submitted, you've submitted a card. Can you give me your name, sir?
Yeah, my name's Alexander Jackson.
Okay, Alexander Jackson, thank you. We'll have you speak on behalf of the appellant. And just out of curiosity, why is Dr. Chan not here? Do we know?
I don't know.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Four years since the appeal.
Okay, so it's been four years since the appeal, you're currently...
No, since Dr. Chan's appeal. Mine was about five years ago.
Got it. Okay, so Mr. Jackson, here's what I'll do is you'll have approximately 10 minutes to lay out your case. Other folks can speak as well, but they'll be limited to three minutes. But you'll have 10 minutes to kind of state your case. The applicant will have 10 minutes to present their case. You'll get one more closing statement at the conclusion of it. Anything I'm missing, Mr. City Attorney? And then we'll go to public comments. Any callers so far on this?
He's my legal counsel.
He's your legal counsel?
Yeah.
And does he, okay.
I mean, if he should, should he start? Or should I start?
It would have been ideal for the legal counsel to actually be here, but I don't know.
He's not in town.
It's the appellant's presentation, or so...
Let's have you start, and then they can comment and fill in the gaps and where they feel that you may not have left certain things out.
Sure.
Alright.
Oh.
Well, I guess you guys already have mostly visual documentation. Pronounce for everybody, too.
Okay, just know that in a hearing, that becomes part of the evidence, and we have to have that turned in to us. Is that, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, then you may use it, and then you'll have to submit it to the clerk for it to be part of the record. So, 10 minutes on the clock, and then Mr. Jackson, whenever you're ready, you will proceed.
Oh, David DeJulio. David DeJulio.
Okay, alright, that makes a little bit of a difference.
How do we do this?
Alright. Okay.
So, okay. I appreciate you guys' time. I'll speak on behalf of Dr. Chan as much as I could. I had my own kind of points I wanted to bring up. So, I'll kind of start with what I was going to speak on, and then I'll maybe get into some of the points that Dr. Chan had as well. So, what I was going to say was, good evening, mayor and city council members. It's my privilege to be with you here tonight. There are many issues you will hear regarding this proposed variance, but perhaps the most shocking is the total disregard for the known and established property boundaries. Our property is 515 Nolan Avenue, and our property is defined as Lot 69 in the northerly four feet of Lot 70. Lot 70 being 521 Nolan Avenue. And this is not only deeded, but certified by the city for our recent certificate of compliance that was affirmed by the city on March 2021. And I just want to point out that this was no easy process to get that certificate of compliance. It was years of back and forth and legal costs and back and forth until the city certified what we have as deeded four feet in addition to Track 69. So, this border is certified and undeniable, and yet the plans submitted by 521 do not take them into account. As you can see by the visuals I provided, I'm not sure if they made their rounds yet, but the boundary of Track 69 without taking into account our additional four feet is right at the edge of our staircase, which, I don't know if you can pull up Vista's plan again. Do you pull up their proposed plans? Or I have it in my documentation. You can see that their plans go right to the staircase.
We're able to see it in what you provided up here.
Okay, it's easier to see on this, too. Yeah, so, it's right on the edge of our staircase. Unfortunately, their plans ignore our four feet that is legally part of our property. As such, we strongly encourage the council to do the right thing here and reject these current plans since they disregard the legal and established borders that confirmed by the city of Glendale. And Vista mentioned just now that part of her rationale for legitimizing this was their own plans, their own designs, which seems to me is kind of a strange thing to take the word of the people trying to build the house of where the property line is. You can see the marker, it's very clear. It's right at the top of the stairs, and it's four feet beyond that. So, that is our property, four feet, which their plans don't take into account. Furthermore, if it wasn't an issue after the last hearing, I doubt the city would have spent two years going through its certificate of compliance and pausing the appeal if it wasn't such an important factor in their plans. Seems to me that they didn't take into account the four feet. We went to make sure the four feet actually are our four feet. After a long legal battle, we have affirmed that those are our four feet per the deed and per the certificate of compliance. And so, we only ask, we're not opposed to them building a house. We just want them to respect the legal boundaries that we, that our property has, and that has been certificate of complied, and this is undeniable. So, that is, that is my main point here. I know that Dr. Karina Chan was appalled with the last hearing. Referencing houses that don't exist seems pretty odd. Also, if you just drive down there like Dr. or Mr. Lee did, he actually was the only member of the hearing that actually drove on our street, it's pretty clear to see that, you know, a bridge is not uncommon. And also, there's nothing that would say in any way that these variances will lessen the mass. There's no evidence showing that it'll lessen the mass of the house. So, she was appalled by that. Also, she was appalled by the slope calculation that they submitted. They didn't submit their survey, they didn't submit a wet signed survey until after the variance was approved, which is very strange. Not until we brought it up at the hearing, the day of the hearing, did they bring one in, which is very strange. So, an architect that you'll hear about later looked at the slope calculations, are very, very incorrect. Perhaps as much as 20% off, 30% off. You'll hear more about that later, I'm not speaking to that so much. But we just, we're in general so concerned why there's so many issues with this variance. I don't know why it's being pushed so hard referencing houses that don't exist, certificates of compliance now that prove the four feet are actually our four feet. There was no wet signed survey at the time of this being passed, and the slope calculation by any, you know, architecturally trained eye can see that this is completely not accurate. So, there's a whole slew of issues. We're concerned why this is being pushed through. We don't think it should be. We think they should have to do what every other resident Glendale has to do, respect the fair process of submitting things the correct way and going about the right rules to do this. They can absolutely try and redesign their plans. We have nothing against that. We only wish them to do it in the proper way. So, that's all I want to say. Sorry if I was a little nervous, you guys...
That's fine. Can we pause the clock?
Yeah.
And does the attorney wish to add anything to that? And then, if he does, I'll add it to the remaining time. How much time is remaining on the...
Approximately five minutes.
Five minutes? Does the legal counsel wish to comment?
Yes, I would like to comment.
Mr. David DeJulio, we will give you the balance of the time to round out the appellant's presentation. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and members of this council, I'm David DeJulio of DeJulio Law Group, 330 North Brand Boulevard, Glendale, California. Tonight, after 35 years of appearing before this august board, I'm appearing remotely from a log cabin in Montana. I needed to appear remotely due to the very, very short notice that was given for this hearing. After a two-and-a-half-year delay where nothing was happening, nobody was contacting the appellant or Mr. Jackson, suddenly, 12 days ago, a notice of this hearing went out, and much to the surprise of everybody. And therefore, I had planned to be out of town. Dr. Chan obviously is not able to make it. Luckily, Mr. Jackson was in town, at least could appear, and some other members of the public could appear. We don't think this is right, to rush into this for no reason after two years. I recommend to the council, suggest to the council, that they not hear this motion tonight, but to either continue the hearing so that Dr. Chan can appear, missing documents can be, and information can be supplied to the council so they can make the right and proper decision. Or perhaps refer this back to the Planning Commission or to the hearing officer for a new hearing. Why would I suggest that? Mainly because this process is five years old. The drawings and the surveys were done in 192018. Five years ago, a lot has changed during that time. Not only have we gone through the COVID, we've gone through a lot line adjustment, a certificate of compliance, as Mr. Jackson so clearly defined, added to his lot and four feet to his lot, which we believe is not accurately described in the drawings, which were done before the four feet were added. The best solution to this would be not to force the council to vote on something with inadequate information, with no proper appeal before it, but to delay it, allow the appeal to proceed properly, or to start over and let the hearing officer hear these matters at a level which should be where these kind of things are sorted out. That concludes my remarks. My recommendation is that we give time for the neighbors and appellants and interested parties such as Mr. Jackson to bring the record before this body so that you can make a proper and good decision. Thank you for the time and the honor of being here.
Hey, thank you, Mr. DeJulio. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson. We'll now allow the applicant to have 10 minutes to present their case. Who will be speaking on behalf of the applicant? Or who, one person more than... Mr. Khan, please approach the podium. Will you be the only one presenting?
Mr. Mayor, we also have our architect, Alan Malikian, who's on the phone as well.
Okay.
Perfect. Good evening, mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located here in the city of Glendale. Before I begin my presentation, I have not participated in a hearing where the appellant is not here, no longer lives in the house, or no longer owns the house, and is the appellant. Stepping away from that, in 2015, Ms. Sophia Nazari and her daughter, Matilda Hartunian, purchased the subject lot, and they purchased it for the intent to build a single-family home for them to live in. They hired a knowledgeable local architect, Alan Malikian, to design a modest house on the site. Alan designed a contemporary house that would follow the natural terrain of the site, be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, and preserve the greatest amount of natural open space. These are all goals from your hillside design guidelines. The house was proportional in size and scale with other houses in the immediate neighborhood. The average-sized house in the area is 2,994 square feet. Our house is 2,486 square feet, some 500 square feet less than the neighborhood average. Our first public hearing was discussed by Ms. Azate. It was a public hearing before the planning hearing officer where the application for variance was submitted. It gets circulated to all the... It gets circulated to all the different city departments. And all the different city departments give written comments. Those comments were received by the hearing officer. Public testimony was taken. And after thorough analysis, the hearing officer approved our variance requests. The decision was appealed. About a year later, the planning commission, in the same process it went through, heard the comments, received public testimony, and after thorough analysis sustained the approval granting the variance. I reviewed the appeal that was filed, and I think Ms. Azate hit on some very key points. One, it was vague, and it was also inaccurate. In terms of the information that was provided and reviewed at each of the hearings, both the planning hearing and the planning commission hearing, the information that was shown, the setbacks, the dimensions on the plans, that four feet was taken into consideration, our setbacks for the interior are accurate. Our plans were accurate. All the information that was reviewed was accurate. And the determination was to approve our variances. Our project has similar height, setbacks, mass, and scale as many of the other properties in this same zone, the same neighborhood on the south side of Nolan. It's been illustrated by staff in the staff report and is part of her presentation this evening. As called out in Glendale Municipal Code 30.43.010, the purpose, the intent of the code is to assure that no property owner should be deprived of privileges commonly enjoyed by other property, commonly enjoyed by adjacent properties and by other properties on that same street. We ask that after all of this time, and it has been quite a bit of time, and the time is a delay, it's a delay tactic, how much longer can we be delayed by appeals, unnecessary appeals, by statements that have no basis, that have no facts? We continue to be delayed and delayed and delayed. We ask that you no longer allow this to be delayed, that we're allowed to move forward with a modest, compatible, single-family house. That's going to conclude my part of the presentation. If you have questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have a question, Mr. Khan. Can you explain that four, four feet was taken into consideration? What does that mean?
So there was a question as to the four feet. Can you pull up the site plan? That's perfect. So if you look at the top of the site plan, there, that area, if you could highlight. If you notice, there are improvements that are across our property that are not part of our property. They're from the neighbor directly to the north, if you will, of the, at the top of that. Those improvements were built across our property. We factored in, there was a four-foot dimension for a piece of land. We originally have always factored that in, even though those improvements are on our property and extend across our property even now. Our 10-foot setback is shown in that dashed line. We set back our property to meet the code from the property line. There, it's always been shown in all of the hearings. We took that into consideration. So that additional four feet or the question of the four feet, there is no question of the four feet. I think it was clearly pointed out by staff in each of the hearings. It was clear, and even to this date, it could be verified with staff. There's no question. We've always met the code as it relates to that interior setback.
So, so let me, let me just follow up, Mr. Khan. So the encro, so you have an encroachment on your property?
That's correct.
That is not the appellant's house, is it? The appellant's house is, is below, is, uh, south, well, what direction are we talking? Okay, that's, the encroaching house is not Dr. Chan, the appellant's house?
The current appellant.
The current appellant.
Right.
Is not, is not their house. That's someone else's home. The four-foot in question, is it on the, let me get this straight, is it on, that's the land adjacent to the appellant's property? Would be at the bottom of this picture. Is that correct?
No, it would be at the top. Do you have a, a survey or something that could, you could show that the, where the four feet? Where's, where's this four feet?
If you look at the Exhibit 2, the site plan, so it shows the property line dimensions and that, that front property line dimension shown at 97.06, that is the most pertinent for an interior setback measurement, and that 97.06, that takes the four feet into consideration. So the, the drawing is accurate. It does say portion of lot 70.
So you have no side setback issue?
We have none. We did not have one at any time.
So it's just the front setback, the driveway?
And the stairs that-
And the stair-
Around-
That are still at issue? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just realized that I've received a campaign contribution from Mr. Malikian. So I believe, and I just checked with the city attorney, I need to recuse myself.
Thank you for that.
I apologize for not-
All right. You can go into the bullpen, we'll call you out for the next item. Anyone else have any conflicts that they may be aware of?
Let me check that.
My appointment to the commission is at a conflict.
No, it's not.
I know.
All right. Any other, any questions from any of the other council members? Okay. Any other, anything else you'd like to add?
Not at this time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Let me allow the other folks that are here to speak now that we have, well, let's ask Mr. Jackson to come back up. You'll have five minutes, Mr. Jackson, to, yes.
And procedurally now, it's, you allow the other speakers to speak and then-
And then have them speak at the very end?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, I should have a handle on how this works, but it's been a long day and I haven't had any coffee after 3:00 PM. All right, so let's have Amy Newborn speak next, followed by Tiffany Borland and Ani Vardabedyan. Do we have any callers?
Yes, actually, we have Alan Malakian online and-
Alan Malikian is the architect. I think he's just on, can we confirm whether Mr. Malikian is here to answer questions or if he would actually like to speak?
Alan, you're on air.
Hi. Hello, council members, this is Alan Malikian.
Mr. Malikian, are you on the phone to answer any questions or would you like to-
Yes, I am, but I would like to add a couple of items that I think Mr. Jackson and also Dr. Chan's attorney indicated, and also they, they spoke directly against me as the project architect. They indicated that the, the survey-
Well, Mr. Malikian, just hang on one moment. I want to give the folks to, who are here in chambers a chance to speak and then we'll hear you right afterwards. So he actually does want to speak.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Newborn, please come back to the podium.
And he's not part of the presentation?
I don't believe so, not necessarily. All right, so, Ms. Newborn, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, Mayor and City Council members. I'm glad to be here. I'm a new resident of Glendale because I moved in Karina Chan, Dr. Karina Chan's house. I happen to be a licensed architect in the state of California. I received this notice 11 days ago. I guess I didn't get the notice in my mailbox, I saw it on the property next door. So I had about 11 days to prepare. Obviously, I'm busy too, and I have, you know, a job, so I tried to use some of my spare time to put some thoughts together. And so I had a chance to review the plans that said 2017 on them. I didn't see anything new. The plans were not stamped by a licensed architect. They weren't signed and sealed. And there was no survey included in the data. I believe that to submit a entitlements application, that those things are required. And it seems to me that the process was hurried to approve the variances. The architect was on the Design Review Commission at the time, and to me, that seems like a conflict of interest. I believe that the driveway setback is not fair. There are other houses on the street that have bigger driveways with the same kind of slopes. We have a bridge driveway up the street. Our driveway is long enough to park a car in it, which I think is important for a single-family house. This garage is very small. It's supposed to be a two-car garage, but I looked at the drawing, I tried to scale it, and in order to fit the two cars in there, you wouldn't be able to access the rest of the garage or walk around it. I don't believe you would be able to egress through the door if there was two cars parked there. So for this reason, I am worried about the street having too many cars parked on the sidewalk and making it narrow and unsafe for the residents. If this is approved, then other houses in this neighborhood might get the same variance and create more traffic on the street and an unsafe environment. So I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
I have a, I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, council member divine.
These two pictures are in the report, all these cars on the street.
Exactly. So there are some historic-
Which cars are these?
There are some historic homes that don't have the proper setbacks that were probably built before the new city codes were, were enacted.
Yep, but they're only, I was up there. I did drive up there. Okay, and I, I don't understand what you're saying, that there are historic homes. Say that again. Why would that cause all these cars to be out there? Because they don't have garages?
There are homes in the neighborhood that are, have insufficient parking already because they're either historic or they have been granted this same sort of variance.
In that cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think this would add to the already existing problem.
Okay, okay.
All right. Anything else you'd like to add? Ms. Newborn?
I would like to see the survey, or I'd like to see a survey with a stamp and seal on it. That would be helpful, and that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Borland?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your time today. On top of everything that has been mentioned, I'd also like to note that the area in which they are looking to build is the most narrow in the entire block, making it completely unfit for the adjusted setback in height that they are asking for, asking for a variance for. This setback in height is three times less than what is required. All houses on the street are tucked in on the hillside and have ample room for parking aside from one, which is over 100 years old and grandfathered in. This build would not even allow for a car to park on the most narrow point of the street. This build would not only cause plenty of parking issues, but it would also be a safety hazard on our small cul-de-sac. When you think about it, just going down that narrow area, if there was fire, ambulance, anything of that nature, they wouldn't be able to drive through because this new build would not have a wide enough driveway for cars to park there. Mr. Rodney Khan mentioned that the house, the house follows the Hillside Guidelines. However, if it did, it wouldn't need three variances. As Mr. Lee mentioned during the planning hearing, he was the only one that drove past the lot at that time and noticed that it would cause parking and safety issues. If we approved such variances, then it would set a precedent for all future bills and open the doors for properties to go higher, higher than permitted, with much shorter setbacks. And if that is the case, what is the point of having these rules and processes in place to begin with if the city will approve such an arbitrary variance? I hope you deny this variance. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Ani Vardabedyan?
Once again, good evening. I really don't know where to start. It's, it feels like this project is being swept under the carpet from the get-go. As the, our neighbor architect, she mentioned, there was no sealed survey that was submitted when the, when, when the, when there was, when this was passed. They, they talk about 83%, was it, I think 84 and a half percent slope? But just, that's just a number. I have, we have yet to see the calculation for this slope. There is, there is no mention, there is no, there is no cal, zone, slope calculation that was never submitted. We never saw the, what really is the zone calculation, the, the slope calculation. If the slope calculation is plus or 5%, 6%, let's say, then does the land become buildable or not buildable? Are they taking any chances of just building a house without really submitting to the city the, the slope calculations? We've never seen them. I don't know where they are. Shouldn't they be on, on some kind of plan with, sealed with, with an architect? That's not for me to know exactly how the process is done and what, what plan shows the slope other than just somebody saying it's 84.5% slope. Is it? Do you not ask for proof of that slope? And then, yes, there is material fact, there is addresses that they used in their comparison, in their comparison to the neighborhood based on addresses that do not exist, case numbers that do not exist. 535 Nolan Avenue does not exist. I don't understand why for anybody, that's not a question mark in their mind. Why would an applicant discuss and show an address that does not exist? Number one. You're asking for the, the five foot versus 15 foot. No, there are only three or four houses in that cul-de-sac. He was saying there are many, many properties. There are not too many properties on that cul-de-sac. There's probably three or four houses. None, none of which, none of which have five foot except for one, which is 515, the address, and that's a 100-year-old house. And the reason why they came up with setbacks and front setbacks and side setbacks is because of that 100-year-old house. It's not to go back and build another 100-year-old code that is, that is not for today. I, I just wanted to say also, the height, they just took an administrative decision. What is that supposed to mean? The height, they just added 32 feet. Why can't just they design, we want them to build a brand-new house on the street. I love it. My neighbor just built a beautiful house. I love it. I go out, I'm very happy, rather than seeing that old house, now I see beautiful house. I want to see a beautiful house, but why not comply with the same code that everybody else do?
Thank you, Ms. Vardabedyan.
Thank you.
And we have Mr. Malikian on the line. Wait, do you have a question, council member divine? Devine?
Yeah, about the slope calculations. Are they correct? Have you done those? I mean, they're telling me that you just guessed, right? That's what she basically said, I think.
Councilmember Devine, they'll say anything. So in terms of our slope calculations, are they correct? Yes. Have they been provided to the city? Yes. Have they been analyzed by Public Works Engineering and the city staff? Yes.
Mr. Emrani? Have they been analyzed by Public Works?
Councilmember Devine, we have a checklist that we go through when we're provided by projects such as these. Our staff has gone through and provided the conditions for the approval. The slope calculation is not, I don't believe, part of what we checked. But I will have to check with my staff on that.
I can respond to that. Yes, they were checked. So the survey in question has been provided, it was several years ago. The survey was done in 2016, 2017, provided to the city. So I'm not, there's no confusion. The confusion is just to say things to delay it. It's all been analyzed. It's all been checked.
Okay. Does the planner agree? Do you agree with that?
Yes, thank you. So, yes, this information has been reviewed. I did take this on from a previous case planner who has since retired. But that information was reviewed by her. The application was routed to every city department, and we only received comments back from Glendale Water and Power, Public Works Engineering, Building and Safety, and Urban Forestry. None of them cited concerns with the slope. They all had standard comments. Public Works Engineering comments didn't mention anything significant about the slope either.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now we have Mr. Malikin on the phone as well. Mr. Malikin, three minutes if you can, please. I know there were some points you wanted to make.
Good evening. This is Alan Malikin. Appreciate you allowing me to speak. Lot has been set in regards to the plans that have been prepared. Unfortunately, I wasn't, I wasn't able to come in personally to be there. So first thing, I want to shed a light to everyone, including the public that is hearing. The average slope was determined and set up by City of Glendale years ago when we had a CUP. When an average slope was over 50%, it required a CUP hearing. After that point, average slope, once the zoning and people like Mr. Johnson and the attorney that spoke for Dr. Chan or the architect came, I think they should study the zoning code of Glendale, understand that if you have over 40% slope of a lot, it does not matter what you have, what you're building, the average FAR of the building turns into a 30% FAR. Anything over that, it's basically, it's steep. In our case, 85% or 84% or 70% or even 100%, we have the same condition lot. The more the slope it is, the more the height of the building increases. So understanding the slope, and everybody's speaking about the average slope and average this and average that, they need to understand what they're asking for. I think everybody just jumped on a bandwagon and started talking about this average slope without understanding what they're saying. The second thing is that average slope is done by a licensed surveyor. A survey is prepared by a licensed surveyor. Having a stamp at that point, when you're going through a variance process or not, does not mean that the survey is done is inaccurate. The project was done over, I have, I've lost count. And it has taken five years for the staff to review the drawings, back and forth, up and down, checking everything that we have drawn. Every square inch of that drawing has been reviewed, every dimension that has been reviewed, and every, every part of that plan has been reviewed and approved. So coming and standing there and saying that we presented an inaccurate drawing, going through several hearings, several appeals, and coming, standing here and saying that we didn't have enough time to come and stand there and present this, we had five years we've been waiting for this hearing. And the whole thing started because the property, adjacent to the property, has a backyard that encroaches into our land. The whole variance started because of that.
All right.
If you ask me, I'm not an attorney, but this is strictly taking an abuse of the system and trying to prolong this process as long as possible.
Mr. Malikin, you're out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's Mr. Jackson's opportunity to close it out with, we'll give you five minutes to address any of the issues that you feel are still left out there unanswered.
Okay. I just, on behalf of Dr. Chan, I just want to read. Pista, correct me. So during her appeal, she brought up the architect that, whenever the slope, I'll read his statement. But then it was said it was going to be de novo after that? What did that mean? And have we done that today?
Mr. City Attorney?
Sure. If you want me to answer, Mr. Mayor. So de novo hearing basically means this is a like-new hearing, meaning it's a brand-new hearing. The council's the deciding body. There's no deference afforded to either the planning hearing officer or the planning commission. It's as if the council's hearing the case new, and it's deciding for itself whether the variance findings can be made.
I think that's important to note because Mr. Khan mentioned that they won the previous appeal, but after this stuff was presented, the city determined it to be de novo because of these reasons. So one thing that for Dr. Chan, then I'll read my closing, is this is from an architect, Mr. Hagopian. He said in regards to the slope, "I don't know what the correct legal way of this process is. I just know my project submitted to the City Glendale. If there's a hillside project and survey involved, the current average slope, 30.08, 770 of the zoning code, I was always told to have a survey, a surveyor of a licensed engineer, due to a wet stamp and wet signature on the hard copy to show in detail. This calculation is not simply to mention just a percentage." So, yeah, I think if the slope is 10% more than what is presented, it might affect the decision of the hearing officer and the planning commission. The reason is that there may be, maybe there a threshold of steepness of the lot being considered, it's not buildable. So, you know, in conclusion, I just want to say that Mr. Khan does a great job at presenting that they're just an innocent family trying to build a house. We're innocent families living on that street, okay? And just like they might be as well. The real reason behind this variance, it's not to conform to hillside requirements. If that was the case, they would conform to the building codes that already exist for this very kind of situation. The real reason is because their lot is an extremely steep slope, one that might, many people might say is unbuildable. And to build on that is expensive. The reason they're doing these variances is because they're trying to save a buck. That's what, at the end of the day, is really what they're trying to do here. So it's, as much as he's trying to make it seem like it's an innocent, you know, us versus them, this is an entire neighborhood coming together. We're not doing this for no reason. This is a large one of our time, our resources, and our effort. We're doing this because we think what they're doing is just patently wrong. So I think that's a good way to conclude it. I think, you know, I've presented it all I can for, I went to the city today to double-check the property marker at the staircase. That's the track 69. Obviously, it's four feet past that. I don't think that we have really established that they have a proper wet sealed survey. So I don't think the plans at least should be able to continue until they do this research. But I think that in the interest of everybody here in the City of Glendale, I think that this should be rejected. They should remake their plans per the same codes everybody else has to, or at least provide valid reasons they need this. So we thank you for your time. I hope I represented Mrs. Chan well. But, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, not, apparently not from you, but for staff. So thank you. And if we do, we'll just ask you.
Okay. Thank you for staying late.
No, sorry. Thank you. Councilmember Al Sotirian, you have a question?
Can you address this issue of signed survey versus not signed?
Sure. So generally, we actually don't require a survey for applications. We also don't require that the plans be stamped or sealed by a licensed architect. Designers can submit applications to the city and prepare those drawings. The survey that was submitted to, at Planning Commission, that's included as an exhibit, that does have a stamped seal on it. So that is, that is the engineer certifying that this is accurate information. So that is on file with us. That was submitted at Planning Commission. I believe it is one of the last exhibits. It was Exhibit Nine with the staff report.
I actually have a question for Ms. Hartunian. Hi. You initially submitted these plans in 2016?
2015.
2015.
I actually have two kids from that time on, yeah. So it's been many years.
How much have you been paying in property taxes? If you could like ballpark in this?
About, yeah, 1,400. We have maintained requests for fencing from our neighbors. They have asked for fence. We put that in. We've taken care of the bush issues every year, maintain that for hazard purposes or whatnot. This has been a long process. It's been draining for my family. At this point, honestly, it's been to the point that we are very disappointed to even want to proceed any further to live there at this point because it's been frustrating with the support that we have not been getting from our future neighbors, for example. And it's been really frustrating to deal with this process. It's been over many years. I mean, I was single at that time. I have two kids, five-year-old. It's been a long process for us.
Where are you living now?
Burbank.
Burbank.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Who would like to go first in terms of comments?
Well, let me just ask a question of the City Attorney.
Sure. Councilmember Al Sotirian, please.
So just so I'm clear, both, both Dr. Chan at 515 Nolan and Mr. Jackson at 531 Nolan appealed the same decision?
My understanding is that Mr. Jackson appealed the planning hearing officer's decision to the planning commission, and Dr. Chan appealed the planning commission's decision to the council.
Yeah, and the addresses are reversed. Mr. Jackson's 515, so the property to the north.
So, so just procedurally, does, does Mr. Jackson have standing to make this appeal?
Uh-huh.
His appeal was to the Planning Commission.
Correct. Councilman Jarian, so the, you know, our process has been, once the appeal's been filed, we follow through on it. There is a provision in the code which says that the appellant does not appear and presents no evidence, then the council can just sustain the decision of the lower body without taking further action, given that there's some questions to whether or not Dr. Chan had assigned Mr. Jackson the right to appeal as well, to appear, as well as Mr. DeGiulio. I think, given that we've already gone through most of the hearing, it's probably more appropriate to move forward and make a decision based on the record.
Okay, that was my question.
So my question is regarding some of the, the timing of this. It was referenced that this came back awfully quick. And can you please clarify the timeline in which this had to be or was brought back?
The notice, the notice, I guess, to the others.
To the point about the notice, planning staff, we mailed the notices out October 10th. The 10 days starts October 14th. So residents would have received it. The site was posted in accord with our requirements on the 14th as well. And it was published in the Glendale Independent Paper. So the public noticing requirements were met for this project. As far as the timing of everything else, you know, just between Planning Commission and now, the delays caused by that, dealing with the four-foot strip of land, there was a lot of back and forth with the previous case planner, legal teams, trying to come to a resolution. You know, all of that just adds to the amount of time that this took. And then, once that was completed through the certificate of compliance process for both properties, then it was scheduling a date, coordinating with everyone's schedules, trying to accommodate the applicant, the appellant, making sure there's room on the calendar. So all of that kind of added to the delay. I will point out that I did confirm the state with the appellant back in August. And that's when we also confirmed it with the applicant. And we do mail a notice to the appellant at the address on file, which I also had confirmed with her because something had come back in the mail. That was mailed on the 6th of October. And again, it was confirmed back in August for the state. So notice has been given to the appropriate parties.
Mr. Mayor?
Question. Before, did she say, did she let you know that she wasn't living there anymore?
Planning staff asked for, for her to confirm her address several months ago because a letter had come back, and she indicated that was her address.
Okay.
If, Mayor Kasakian, this is rather unorthodox, but I was going to ask, Ms. Izad, he didn't, the dispute over the property line and the four-foot setback had to go through a county process as well?
They did also have to go through LA County for the recordation. There also was an issue, I don't want to get into too much details because it's been resolved, but they did go back into Planning Commission's last year, I believe, or the year before, to resolve the notice of violation essentially. So we have to send them a notice saying, "We know this is an issue. We're going to record a notice of violation unless you want a hearing." They requested a hearing. We went to Planning Commission. Planning Commission determined, yes, this is a violation. Then the certificate of compliance process happened. And that takes, that just takes time.
Okay. Who would like to go first in terms of comments?
All right. Councilmember Al Sotirian?
This, I think there's, I just have a couple of comments to staff. I think the noticing requirements, we should look at updating. You know, I don't know who reads which newspapers now, but just because it's been done as such in the past, maybe we upgrade in the way that we do notices that actually reaches people. I don't know how many people have read notices. Mr. Calvert, I think this is something that I've talked to you about time and again. I don't know how we avoid situations like this. I'm sorry you waited this long. I don't think it's okay. I'm still looking for some sort of procedural system that if there are no grounds for the appeal, that there also be a financial burden placed on the folks that are continuously appealing and causing a financial burden to somebody that's trying to make Glendale their home. So I appreciate the staff's thoroughness in this. And I support upholding the decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Devine?
Thank you. I did drive, as I said, to the location. I wasn't sure whether to bring this up, and I don't know how many of you were there back about four years ago. And there was a problem on that lot because kids were coming up there, and they were doing drugs. And I think they attacked or threw stuff at Dr. Chan, et cetera. And we got the police up there to enforce. And one of the comments was, "If somebody would build on this lot, then all the problems would be solved." And now here we are. Somebody wants to build on the property, and they don't want it. So it's like, what do we do? Okay, so I looked at the basis for the appeal, and neighborhood uniformity, the first one, the house across the street. If you're talking architecturally, it's, it's just, the house across the street is beautiful. And that's kind of what- the street is beautiful, and that's kind of what this one is designed to look like. Setbacks, I drove all around the, I mean, not just in that cul-de-sac, but I went up Nolan and down Ridgeway, and the ones on the view side, very few of them have any more than five feet, six feet setback. It just, it just, they just weren't, it wasn't there. They were just right, built right on, maybe some steps going down, and then there was the house. And so, that argument, I think that the variance for the setback is absolutely on okay. South side, let's see, what else? That's neighborhood uniformity. Public welfare concerns, I'm not sure what that was about. Will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injuries. No visual impacts, consistent with the neighborhood development pattern, absolutely. Stairs are hidden from view, the design is according to the topography. So, I don't see. The garage, the garage, they're extending it so that they can put, hopefully, their cars in there, but there's already a problem on this street with cars. Those pictures show it. Thank you, Isad Ani, for providing those pictures of all those cars. I don't know who they belong to, I don't know when the photo was taken, but there were a lot of cars on that street, and this is not going to add the garages to eliminate or to give them a place to park, and hopefully, that's what you'll do. Let's see, second basis, inefficient and inadequate evidence presented to planning, and I'm not seeing that, that that happened. And then, it said new evidence of material facts, nothing was provided in the appeal. So, I am going to also, I think they did actually, you know, if anybody knows the design guidelines, it's Alan Malekian, and I have to say that, I give props to him, and the hillside development policy. So, I am going to uphold and sustain the Planning Commission appeal. Thank you, or not a decision.
Councilmember Divine?
Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
Well, I was here when we developed the hillside building guidelines, and I think we realized that there are some lots that, some lots that you look at and you just say there's no way you can build on that lot, but engineering and design is such that there's really no such thing as an unbuildable lot. This is a steep lot. We're dealing with three requests for variances, the front setback to be five feet instead of 15 feet, the driveway to be six feet instead of 18 feet, and to permit uncovered stairs within the setback area. So, the problem is if you hold the house to those strict guidelines, you push it way out towards Valentine, further down the hill, you're going to end up with a greatly more massive house than you would if you, if you didn't tuck it in to Nolan the way it is now. So, with all the requirements for a variance, I think that these three requests meet them, that it's consistent with the neighborhood, it doesn't affect the public welfare, it'll probably improve the public welfare, as Councilmember Divine said. I think it'll be an improvement to the neighborhood, and I think the design is probably the only type of design that would fit there, and I think it'll be a good addition. So, I would, I would vote to sustain the Planning Commission's determination.
I think a lot of valid points were brought up today from my colleagues. Unfortunately, this is a situation of circumstance that I do not envy for the individuals who've moved into this home after the fact of an appeal having been filed. It's kind of strange, first time I've ever, you know, seen this type of an appeal and hearing come before the council, and I wish that there was a way to have been able to go back in time and give you adequate notice and have this all be done in a way where you feel informed, but some of the facts remain pretty steadfast, as Councilmember Divine, who always takes the time to go up and visit these sites, has articulated, you know, there's already a number of issues there that I don't feel are going to be compounded by the addition of a property, building on it at this location. I think that there's also, I know that there's some concerns about the individual who's designed this property. We had one individual have to recuse themselves, but it's someone I've known for years, and I know their work, and they've done many, I think, it's someone who knows the guidelines and knows the rules as well as anybody in the city. I think Mr. Malikian is someone who has done enough projects in the city where he's not someone who's cutting corners, I can assure you of that. And I think that when I look at the aerial view of the lots, and when I've driven by it as well, it seems to make sense that, you know, that is not, I know that you're saying that, well, you don't object to them building a house, but, you know, there is some considerations for a growing family, and I think it's a reasonably sized home for the lot, even though it's on a hillside. So, I think it's pretty clear where the council is on this in terms of sustaining the decision. I'll now entertain a motion.
I'll move it. Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Asatryan, seconded by Councilmember Divine. Is there anything else that you need before we take a roll call?
Just for the record, that's motion at 9A1.
That's, yes. Okay, let's have the roll call vote.
Councilmembers Asatryan?
Yes.
Brotman? Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes, thank you very much. Good luck. I hope that you all can get along as neighbors once this home is built.
Our next...
Let's ask Councilmember Brotman to come in. Thank you, Councilmember, for sticking around, and I know that Councilmember Najarian has said that he may have a conflict on the next item.
Yes, if the clerk reads it in, I will make a statement.
Let's go ahead. Clerk Abadjan, and then...
Next hearing is community development regarding extension of interim urgency ordinance, number 5994 prohibiting developments with new and conversion of existing drive-through waiting lanes citywide. One introduction of ordinance extending for an additional 10 months of 15 days. Interim urgency ordinance number 5994 prohibiting developments with new and conversion of existing drive-through waiting lanes citywide.
Thank you. And, go ahead, Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As disclosed on my FPPC Form 700, I do have an interest in Starbucks by way of being a shareholder, and I am informed by the city attorney because this particular issue will primarily affect a Starbucks retailer that, that would create a financial conflict for me.
You're in the pocket of Big Latte.
Yes.
All right.
So, I will excuse myself.
Before you leave, Councilmember Najarian, I do want to take a moment of privilege and revisit an item. I spoke at length during the staff comments. I forgot to ask for staff to look into one item. I had made a promise to folks in the community about one, and I want to add one of my own and ask for colleagues to second this. So, some time ago, we lost counsel, a member of this community, Mr. Armon Gorgorian, who was very active in the Home at Menarad, a dear friend to many. The Home at Menarad chapter has asked for something to be named in his honor here in the city, and I would like to see if we could name, not necessarily, not a street, not anything else but a square. You can designate an intersection as a square that doesn't require address changes for the Home at Menarad in honor of Armon Gorgorian. This is something that they have approached the city manager's office. I know Mr. Takalian has been involved in the discussions with members of the executive committee, and if, my colleagues are so inclined, I'd like staff to bring us a report about honoring Mr. Gorgorian by naming an intersection in honor of Home at Menarad Chapter.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Divine. I know he thought very highly of you and was a friend of yours. And also, in addition to that, because I think that these squares are an opportunity to honor individuals in our community and recognize folks, I'd also like to see if there's interest to name the intersection right here on the corner of Isabel and Broadway, right where our Veterans Memorial is, after Sadeo Munamori, our only Glendale-born Medal of Honor recipient who fought in the 442nd Gopher Broke Division in World War II, a Japanese-American who was in an internment camp and who died in the service of this country. And I see Councilmember Divine seconding that as well. So, thank you, I just wanted to, I forgot to put that on the record, I apologize. Councilmember Najarian, you're free to go and enjoy your, thank you. Okay.
Do we have to have a discussion on? Just to read the item.
The clerk has read the item into the record. Mr. City Attorney, what do you want of us to do on this item?
I think since the hearing, just open the hearing. If there are no speakers, you can close the hearing, and then somebody can introduce the ordinance unless you have questions.
Do we have any callers on this item, or anyone?
We do not.
Okay. So, we will open the hearing at 10:04, and then close the hearing at 10:04 PM. And who would like to introduce it?
Make the motion?
It's an introduction.
It's an introduction.
It'll be introduced by Councilmember Asatryan. Thank you. And I saw a number of hands going up, so it's, there's plenty of support here at the dice for it. What is next?
Next is oral communications, and we do not have any cards or callers.
Okay. And then, we have, we do have new, we do have new business.
Do you have new business, yes.
I move that the claims for damages of Rebecca Berman be hereby is approved for the total sum of $93,486.97. The Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon receipt of a properly executed release.
All right. Who would like to second that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Asatryan. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Asatryan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Kasakian?
Yes. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Brotman. We adjourn at 10:05 PM tonight, and good luck.